I'm calling this city council meeting to order. Today is October 24th, 2023. It's 3:00 PM. This is the City of Prescott, city council voting meeting. Mayor Protam, do we have any announcements or introductions today?
Today, we are privileged to have both mayor. So I would like to introduce former council member Mary Ann Subtles. Stand up and be recognized, Mary Ann. Mary Ann also serves on CDBG and the Preservation Commission. Thank you, Mary Ann, for your service to the City of Prescott. And Lois Freworth. I tried to practice that, Lois, I swear. Please stand up and be recognized so we can embarrass you one more time. Lois will be joining us on council in two more meetings? I think, two more meetings. I also have announcements, mayor. Two after this, okay. I have announcements. Please join me tomorrow for the official ribbon cutting of the Granite Creek mural project, Wednesday, October 25th at 4:00 PM. The mural is located on the trail north of Gurley Street. Please note that there are two entrances to the creek to access the mural. The first one is beside the Dinner Bell Cafe. Stairs required. The other one does not require stairs and is near the crosswalk where Sam Hill Alley and Willis Streets meet. Below, the addresses are staircase access addresses, 321 West Gurley Street, and no stair, easy access is 143 North McCormick Street. We hope to see you all there. For those of you who have been enjoying the Greenway Trail, you've probably seen the progress they've made on that mural. It's quite something to behold. In addition, we recently sent out some 3,000 citizens' special surveys on behalf of the city. We have had over 250 completed so far, but we need your help to complete the survey if you have already received one. So please, the rest of you out there who are holding on to surveys and not getting them to us, we need your feedback. We hope to learn about citizen goals and comments in order to plan for the upcoming budget year. If you didn't get a mailed survey, an online version will be available for all citizens on November 7th through the city website. And that's all, mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. We'll now have an invocation from Rabbi Susan Shanerman from the Temple Brith. Shalom, followed by a pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilman Shishka.
Thank you. Good afternoon. God, our strength and protection, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, how do we fix this? But what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. And help them to acknowledge that the Jewish community in Prescott is suffering because of the rise in antisemitism around the world and in the United States, in Arizona, and even in Prescott. And know that we also suffer greatly because of the war that currently ravages Israel. We pray for the state of Israel in this devastating time of shock and grief. We pray for the souls of the innocent victims. God, send comfort to the grieving, send healing to the injured, and strength and wisdom to their doctors and nurses. God, spread your shelter of peace over their land and this land. Wash away all hatred and bloodshed. And may our local community continue to support the Jewish population in Prescott with police and government and citizen awareness and assistance as we struggle to find meaning and hope in the midst of tragedy. And let us say amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We now have two proclamations that are going to be presented. The first one is-
Roll call first, mayor, sorry.
Oh, that's right. We have a presentate. Well, we need to do roll call, don't we?
We do. Mayor Good-
Full council chambers like this, it's a little bit exciting.
Mayor Good-
Mayor present.
Mayor Protam Montoya-
Still here.
Councilwoman Kentelme-
Here.
Councilman Moore-
Here.
Councilmember Rusing-
Here.
Councilman Shishka-
Here.
And Councilman Tenney-
Yes.
All are present.
Very good. Now we'll move to presentations. We'll have a presentation from Prescott Meals on Wheels and the Center.
Well, thank you and good afternoon. My name is Neil Sneller, and I'm the executive director for Prescott Meals on Wheels. And standing to my right is Kathy McFadden, who you'll hear from shortly, who's the CEO of the Center. And without the Rowley P. Simmons Community Center building, both of our organizations could not exist. And so I'm here just to thank the City of Prescott and its citizens for the support of Prescott Meals on Wheels, who's been operating since 1973. And on behalf of our entire organization, thank you for the commitment from the city because it helps us to serve those who are most vulnerable in our community. We have 210 dedicated volunteers who drive over 120,000 miles each year, serving 700 clients, roughly 104,000 meals each year. And we're facing incredible demand for Meals on Wheels services, and the need from the support from the community has never been more critical. A hot meal delivered by a volunteer to an individual means so much more than just a meal. It's a lifesaver, a connection, a break in loneliness, and peace of mind. And too many of our senior neighbors are battling hunger and isolation. And with your ongoing support, we can partner in delivering hope to those neighbors who need it most. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy.
So I'm Kathy McFadden. I have been with the Center for 14 years, and I've been the CEO for about a year. And we are really working on turning things around, and we just wanted to thank the mayor and council for everything you do for us to allow us to use the Rowley P. Simmons Building, which houses the Center and Meals on Wheels, two separate nonprofits. With Neil coming on board, we're doing a lot of things together, and I think that is unifying our community even more. We have a lot of activities, and I wanted to pass out a newsletter when I'm finished, if I have permission, so you could see that we're doing a lot of community events. And we're even working on raising some funding to create some walking trails and a park area with the land behind the Center. So we just want to let you know that we are more than just a senior center. We're actually 18 and over, and we have been creating a lot of community events. So thank you for your time.
Sure, go ahead.
May I speak?
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Neil. I know you're expanding the number of programs available throughout the community. Although it's historically been kind of looked at as a senior location, there's a lot of different activities that are available for a variety of members of our community. And thank you, Neil. I know I've done a couple of ride-alongs with Meals on Wheels myself, and there's many people in the community that look forward to the delivery of those meals, and sometimes it's their only contact with someone else outside of their, outside of their home. So it's more than just a meal and a nourishment. Sometimes it's just a connection with other folks. So thank you all.
I would, excuse me, I had a request to speak. Did it not show up on your screen?
What would you like to say, Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. We had a little technical difficulty here. I just wanted to say that I've been the council liaison to the Center, and they've been doing a wonderful job coming back from COVID. The parking lot's full, the building's full, they're increasing their revenue, and it's council, ex-councilmember Subtles is also on the board. And it's wonderful to see the collaboration between Meals on Wheels and the Center. So if you haven't had a chance, please visit the Center and sign up for some of their wonderful activities. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to proclamations. The first one is Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, and that'll be presented by Councilman Shishka.
I don't think you'll have any problem hearing me. Well, we only have six wherethes for this today. So this is a proclamation for Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, November 6th through 10th, 2023. Whereas, the City of Prescott is pleased to join Dignity Health Yavapai Regional Medical Center located in our city as it celebrates Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, November 6th through 10th, 2023. And whereas, Dignity Health Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes through optimal blood management. And whereas, patient blood management is the appropriate provision and use of blood, its components and derivatives, and strategies to reduce or avoid the need for a blood transfusion. And whereas, Patient Blood Management Awareness Week speaks to the concerns of every person to have the best health care available to them, respecting individual preferences and beliefs, and continuing education of health care professionals to provide that care. And whereas, Dignity Health Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes and educating the medical community about the best practices in blood management. And whereas, we commend the members of Dignity Health Yavapai Regional Medical Center for extending themselves in service to others according to their commitment to improving patient outcomes. Now therefore feel good, mayor of the City of Prescott does recognize the week of November 6th through 10th, 2023 as Patient Blood Management Awareness Week.
Congratulations. I'll give this to you. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Shishka, and Mayor Good, and the entire council for all the good work that you do.
Thank you.
And I'm pleased, as part of the patient blood management team at Dignity Health YRMC, to accept the proclamation. And just say a couple things about PBM, what we call it. I think most of us are very aware of our heart health, our brain and digestive health, but do we think about our blood health? It is an organ, too, that does very important things for the body. And it turns out our own blood is still the best thing to have in our veins, but we want it to take oxygen to the organs and tissues, and we want it to clot appropriately when we're injured. So it's interesting to me that 400 years ago, a physician named William Harvey, without microscopes or other testing equipment, he came to view blood as the priority organ. So we think it's real important to visit yrmc.org in the Medical Services tab and Patient Blood Management, so you can learn more, and you'll know how to contact us if you need some assistance. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Farther away is better.
Thanks, John. Thank you very much. Our next proclamation is for Homeless Awareness Month, November 2023.
I think I've got you beat, Steve. I only have four in mine, so. Well, members from Agape House, you can come up, too. Come on. Anyone else? All right. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation on behalf of the City of Prescott for Agape House Homeless Awareness Month, November 2023. Whereas, Prescott, Arizona joins the nation in recognizing November as Homeless Awareness Month. And whereas, last year, the Prescott area identified over 150 homeless students, Agape House of Prescott works to reduce the number of homeless families by working, walking alongside families as they rebuild and turn their lives around. And whereas, since its incorporation in 2013, Agape House has an 86% success rate of families living independently one year after graduation from Agape House. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Prescott hereby proclaims November 2023 as Agape House Homeless Awareness Month and encourages citizens of Prescott to give back and become involved with Agape House of Prescott in their vision to provide a pathway to independence for families in crisis.
Thank you.
You think she just won the world?
Yeah, I know.
She wants a picture.
Yeah, come on, here, the picture. It looks better if there's three people in the picture than two. Would either of you like to say a few words?
Mayor, council, first, thank you for honoring the whole organization, not just ours. There's some other organizations here that partner with us in Prescott, in the surrounding area. It's a big problem. It's sad, in a beautiful town, it's still an issue. We don't want the problems of Phoenix up here. But thank you for that. Thank Michael, your whole CDBG team, and the others, the change for the better. All those little pieces help us and many other organizations bring people from crisis, whether it's an older person, a senior, a family, juniors. We just want to help them, take them from that life of crisis to a life of independence. I mean, we look forward to the day when one of those seats is filled by someone who came out of that crisis lifestyle. We have people that have come through our organization and others that not only are a homeless person, you see, you know, pushing a shopping cart or using drugs, we have people who have gone to start businesses in this town, where they're employing 10 or more people, creating revenue for the town, for the city, and they've had changed lives. And it's because this is a great place to live. Everyone wants to live, it's everyone's hometown. Sadly, some people who are really challenged wind up here or have issues here. So thank you again. We appreciate you all.
All right, we'll move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have a couple of comment cards, mayor, and our first one is from, I believe the name is Louis Rowe. I hope I said that correctly.
How you guys doing today? I got some flyers to hand out, is that okay? Okay, so I'm here for neural rights-
Bringing the mic down, sir.
Okay. My name is Louis Rowe. I'm from Targeted Trafficked, I'm a neural rights organization. Human trafficking with cybernetics. Cybernetics, the science of communications and control systems, both machine and living. Cybernetic human trafficking, where branded computer meets the real world and the person untraceably. A place where we can define torture and human trafficking with the cybernetic world, the reality struggle of influences are made for a pretty penny, which means they make a lot of money. The destruction of oneself through illegal BCI, branded computer interfaces, people are toyed with and used as illegal experiments for branded computer interfaces. Neurology and implants. Small semiconductors that connect people to the computer from afar. Data centers that collect and control this information with the information stolen from the individual, the individual implanted. Once implanted, you are connected to a whole wide range of deep neural networks, where AI, cybernetics, incapable of influencing the mind through nerve reactions. All cognitive liberty at this point are stolen by the hands of corporate professionals. Cyber torture is what is called by the United Nations. United Nations created a mandate on cyber torture, but was turned away, much like the individuals that complain in are turned away into the world of mental health. Not truly observing the problems, we need technology that can read these implants and find the persons, and find them in the person's body. We need a way to save people from these illegal ventures from corporations' hands with corporate chains. My organization would like the support from this, from the city. My organization plans to retain cognitive liberty without the restraints of criminals at the criminal's hands. These corporate individuals, these corporate individuals here in the US or foreign do not care about what happens to the individual. Your mind and your life are in the hands of the corporate corporations. The cybernetics act as a sort of mind surveillance with the neural implants, AI communication, cybernetics, and torture for information. This type of reality is fearful, but it is happening today. Data centers somewhere is collecting all the information unidentifiably. If the public knew exactly what was happening in today's time, there would be an outcry. Neural data in today's time is everything, and they are rocking the boat, untraceably and illegally. This type of human experimentation must come to a stop. The truth about neuroscience and ways of capturing brain data illegally must be approached and put these people under accountability. The law defines men all equal, not one above the other. The ethics and values need to change in the medical field, including psychiatric. We need structure in a way to capture these, capture this criminalization. Vote for and pledge for neural rights. For every citizen and remove people from corporate hands, no man has the right to take another's for any purpose, that includes science and with endeavors to no end. Thank you. Louis, Targeted Trafficked, thank you. I'm from Phoenix, Arizona. I've spoken in front of the city council there. I've done a lot of political work and done a lot of activism over the course of five or six years. I would like to act in the city, but I would like to support the city officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Benedict?
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. I just wanted to come to say thank you to the city councilwoman, Weshi, Mayor Good, the entire development team, city attorney Chelsea, huge thank you for working through the many bureaucracies to finally get us water for Whipple Project. And I'm just excited to go on to this next phase, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you. You've all spent lots of hours and man-hours working on this with us, and we appreciate it, and it does not go unnoticed, and just thank you so much. Fort Whipple is going to change the face of veteran homelessness in this community. It's 103 units, we have 105 veterans on our waiting list. So it's gonna, it's gonna shift dramatically for us in our community and for our veterans. So thank you. That was it.
Again, I hope I said the name right.
I can't hear a thing you're saying. Lisa, Lisa Romain? Lisa, is Lisa here?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members. This is my first time in front of such an august board, so I'll try to be as coherent as possible. I'm here because I'm a dog walker. I am one of many in my neighborhood, and we have had, in the last two, three months, eight out of 10 that I am familiar with have been attacked, hospitalized, or aggressed by off-leash dogs. We really feel that this needs to be addressed in some fashion, and what fashion, I really don't know. Perhaps better education for dog owners, perhaps mandatory training for people who have aggressive dogs. It's gotten to the point where we really cannot, I don't feel that I can walk and enjoy the beauty of Prescott in the morning without having to look behind me constantly when I hear something coming behind me. I would really appreciate some study on this, and as I say, I'm not sure what the, what the procedure would be, but I do believe that people who have dogs need to be reeducated. I know there are laws on the books about off-leash dogs, but it seems that no one seems to be aware of them. I've had dog owners to aggress me and telling me that I'm a troublemaker, that there's nothing wrong with their dog, and I have to pick up my dog, as many other people do. It's really becoming a problem, and specifically from what I hear in my area, which is the Prescott Heights, Campbell, Delano area. And Officer Gray of Animal Control has concurred that this is becoming a problem in this area. So I would appreciate some consideration on this matter. Thank you very much.
Lynn Sams?
Sarah, can I have just a reminder for everybody to get as close as you can to that mic? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay? I want to follow up with Lisa's comments regarding the dog situation in Prescott Heights. I've known about them for a year since one of our best friends was bitten, mauled. She has a deformity of her hand, her dog needed care. She finally had to go to counseling in order to deal with the dog issue. 10 days ago, I was walking in my neighborhood where I've lived for 10 years. Out of the blue, here comes a pit bull. In two seconds, that large pink grin on their face is facing me. I had no idea what to expect. I have a tiny little poodle. I tried picking him up, he slipped out of my hands. I tried picking him up again, so it became a chaotic situation. I was actually on the opposite side of the street than this person's house. And of course, actually, the dog didn't bite me, and I can't say I was surprised because who would know? When a dog is attacking you, you have no clue what's gonna happen. So with my heart pounding, I walked home, about 900 feet is how close I live. I didn't even know this house was in there, it's kind of tucked up in the woods. Anyway, I decided, you know, with the, well, the one person that was totally mauled with her hand was only one of two that I knew about, the other person had just been attacked and bitten quite savagely until Delano, and that had been about 10 days prior. So I thought, you know, this is just too much. I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna confront this man with his dog. And of course, he had the excuse, my dog's just outside playing in the front yard with my kids. And I thought afterwards, well, if that's the case, why is he running after my dog in the middle of the street? So I just want to bring it to your attention, this has become quite a problem, as Lisa said, in Prescott Heights. We know there's rules on the books. Of course, I called Officer Gray, I talked to her. You know, something that you people may not think about is, it's one thing to be bitten, mauled, and have to go to the hospital. It's also another thing emotionally to have to deal with an aggressive animal racing towards you. You think that's, that's not gonna go away anytime soon. So I would encourage us as a community to seriously look at the dog laws that are on the books, and they probably need tweaking. When I went to talk to the man, by the way, when I first was charged, I won't call it an attack because I didn't get hurt, praise the Lord, but, you know, he never apologized. It's just like, you know, it's just another day in Prescott. So when I went back to him, I drove my car over there, and I said, I want to talk to you. And he said, this is a confrontation, get off my property. So those are the kind of dog odors that we're dealing with, and we might have to keep that in mind. Anyway, thank you for taking your time to hear this address.
That's all, mayor.
Very well, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Very well, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council want to pull any items off of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to pull items B, C, and D. Thank you.
Say that again, C, D, and E?
B is in boy. C and D.
Any additional items? No, I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items then.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through K, with the exception of items B, C, and D.
Second.
Pass the 7-0.
Very good. Councilman, Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I just have a few questions for community development about the easement.
Well, I'm not community development, but I drew the short straw, so ask away.
Okay, thanks, Gwen. This is about a dedication of a right-of-way for creating a public street in the South Ranch residential development of Deepwell Ranch, and also extension of water and sewer utilities. And I just have a few questions. Will there be, will that easement include room for a multimodal sidewalk along this main connector?
So Councilperson Rusing, there are three items on the agenda. The first one is the dedication of the right-of-way, and then there's the plat for Phase 1A of South Ranch and the plat for 3A of South Ranch. The dedication of the right-of-way is for 62 feet of pavement and a median. But on the plat for Phase 1A and Phase 3A, you'll see a trail easement within the tracks that abut the right-of-way. So there is a trail easement along the west side of Jenna Lane, and the water is along the east side of Jenna Lane. So those things are contained alongside of the right-of-way, but the dedication is only 62 feet. So those things are in private tracks just outside of the dedicated right-of-way in either a public utility easement or a tract for public use.
Okay, thank you, because I remember looking at those plats. I had to get out a magnifying glass, and it said in very spine print, TR something?
It said TE, so it's a trail easement.
Trail easement, and the easement is outside of this public easement. It'll be on private lane.
It's outside of the right-of-way, but it is in a public tract, yes.
Okay. All righty. Okay, well, thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that and to make sure that we had easements for the water and sewer utilities included, so we didn't have to purchase the land and pay for it to put in easements for wet utilities.
Those are already there, and in fact, construction plans were submitted, and we did verify that they're within those areas.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gwen. I appreciate it.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I had a question. This may be for Gwen, or maybe it's actually more appropriate for Joe. When we're looking at these final plats, what is our actual charge in approving these final plats?
Well, I think we're still on item 9B.
Oh, okay. Are we?
So we can make a decision on that, and then we can move on to item 9C.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I will hold my question until the next item.
So I'll entertain a motion on item 9B.
Mayor, I move that we approve item 9B on the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Very good. Then we'll move to item 9C.
Thank you. As you realize, we just earlier had a study session about Deepwell Ranch and protection, public safety. We've been having many discussions about overflights, noise, D and L, and this is 720 more residents coming soon. And I was concerned about, are we going to, since it's in the airport influence area, the ASAP plan, are we requiring any soundproofing to decrease, hopefully, some of the complaints that we receive? Soundproofing as far as windows, attic, anything required here?
Mayor and Council, in response to that, the development criteria, both in the Deepwell Master Plan and the city's current building codes, have an elevated level of insulation that's required in order to meet those codes. And I apologize, I'm George Worley, I'm the planning manager. To meet those codes, they effectively create additional sound barriers just meeting the energy codes in the building code, but the Deepwell Master Plan has additional requirements on top of that that we enforce during the building permitting process. So the answer is yes. We do have codes that will add additional sound mitigation levels, and those will be enforced during the individual building construction permits for each individual home.
Okay. And then, thank you. This also includes the next agenda item, on the consent agenda, item 9D and C, so I'd like to just combine the two. I attend every airport advisory committee meeting, and at the end of every meeting, they have a discussion about all the complaints, and our airport employees have to go out, and they make personal home visits to people in Deepwell Ranch mostly about overflight complaints. And they met with HOAs, they've met with community people, and I'm stunned at how much time and effort they have to spend because it's, people are just not being properly notified. And I would like to request that before we approve these plats, that we upgrade the notification procedures to include an AIA map, a map of the airport influence area, a disclosure, and then also a release that releases the city of any responsibility for all the complaints and the noise. Because apparently, and as you can see from the study session, people aren't being properly notified, and these documents should be signed at the opening of escrow, when the deposits are put down, because as it is now, they do not realize the extent of what they're getting into. Thank you.
And I'll just address that briefly, because this is something that we've been involved in legal as well, of having a feeling that disclosures were insufficient. There is a requirement for disclosure and a form of one within the navigation easement contained in the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan and Development Agreement. And we did not believe that that form was going out. We have since, working with the home builder, ensured that that now is part of what's going out. It's part of the community documents that they get. So there are a lot of documents, but they do get that updated form that we required, and we made them, we made sure that they did that before we got to this step. And then I'll say, as it relates to form kind of waiving liability of the city, I don't think we can do that specifically, although we do do that through the navigation easement, which applies to all of those properties. So I think that we're happy they worked with us. They weren't where we wanted them to be, but we've come a long way, and they've updated their disclosures to contain that form.
Because I would like to see a copy of those disclosures, just for my own peace of mind, and I think that that's something that people just have not been properly informed, and it is just, it has been skyrocketing because we keep approving more and more subdivisions under the flight plan. They have 800 flyovers, over 800 flyovers a day, and we bear, the airport bears the brunt of the phone calls, and maybe in those forms, we should ask them to just maybe call the builder and his legal team instead of us. Thank you.
Well, I have similar concerns. I've actually sat down with the two homeowners in Westwood and gone over the actual closing documents that they received and signed off on when they purchased their homes. They were told that they would have a full copy of the CCNRs. They were given a link on their computer to access those. The link was broken. They were not able to access the CCNRs. They received them about two weeks after their close of escrow. So that obviously was not sufficient. And making a statement like, "The homeowner will have access to those," without actually being able to sign off and saying, "I received them, and I've had a chance to review them." Even here, where it says CCNRs which reference the navigation easement. Yes, there is an navigation easement on the underlying property that the property owners have signed off on, but I think it's essential that each and every individual homeowner acknowledge that navigation easement and sign off on it individually, so that they know what the total overall impact is going to be in their homes. They also reference a placard in the sales office. Well, this placard doesn't have anything to do with a navigation easement, other than showing a proximity of their home to the airport. Well, we've heard from a lot of people that said, "Well, yeah, I knew I was buying a home near the airport, but I had no idea that there would be this many overflights." And that's what a navigation easement is there to do, to identify the overflight impact and make sure the homeowner knows that and acknowledges that they're purchasing in a high aircraft overflight area, and they accept the consequences of that. So these things need to be more legitimate, and they need to be individually acknowledged. And I don't think that's happening, even though the builders are claiming it. I've yet to see it actually happen on an individual basis. So how are we gonna enforce that and monitor it?
I can address how we enforce and monitor. I think it's important, and clearly, we've spent a lot of time on this disclosure issue, and I think that they've improved. We do need to enforce and monitor, and I think that how we enforce and monitor is, it's an agreement. It's part of both the navigation easement and the contract. So on a contractual level, we can withhold building permits if we see that that's not being done. I have checked, and based on what I've, and I think someone in community development went to the sales office to make sure, to see what their actual documents were, and it did contain that document. My impression is it wasn't being given previously. It is now, and I've checked to make sure that the link works. For example, the link now works, and we do have that form, as I mentioned, the form of disclosure that's required, and the contract is finally being given and part of those disclosures. They're signed off on as a receipt, though there are maybe 20 things being signed off on, so it is part of a big packet. But it's signed off on before the contract is countersigned, and that we have receipts for that. So we can at least acknowledge that we have the receipts and enforce on the receipts, and then there's a five-day rescission period to receive the deposit back. Five days is not a lot, but we don't have anything covering that in our agreement.
Well, as long as that's being done and done consistently, I think we should be in a pretty good condition. So I would suggest that whenever we have an inspector going out to look at new home construction, maybe they drop by the sales office and take a good look to see that these disclosures continue to be offered. I mean, I was told that this was happening before, when it was Dorn Homes, and then I was told it was happening when American Southern Homes acquired Dorn, and now we have a third entity evermore, which is over and above those. So every time it seems like the ownership changes, then there's new policies, and sometimes the individual homeowners don't get what they're, we expect them to get. So as long as we can drop in occasionally without previous notification, and we can confirm that this is continuing to be done correctly, then we should be okay.
I have one more question.
Thank you.
Mayor?
We have Councilwoman Ken Telme is up next.
Yeah. I have two points on this complex here. And George, I was in your office yesterday talking to you about this particular thing, and I wanted to find out, is the owner here today? I'd like to ask a question about the ability. After reading the airport recommendations on this particular complex, there was a disconnect we discovered in the landscaping because of the height recommendation for the area, and we were, there was no way for the homeowner, the end user, to be able to have access to that landscaping plan, and we discussed getting it into the CCNRs, so that the homeowner would see the approved plantings because of the height limitation imposed on the airport. So is he here today? I'd like to ask him about that.
We do have a representative here from the developer who may be able to speak to that.
Mayor, Council, for your record, Lindsay Shuby with law firm of Gamage and Burnham, 40 North Central in Phoenix, Arizona. So thank you very much, and thank you to staff for answering all those great questions we've had so far. We can work with any neighboring, any neighbor that has, that we're aware of the height restrictions on all of the landscaping, and we absolutely will ensure that our residents are aware of that.
Well, in what way? Because I know it's been a disconnect when you've got these airport recommendations on height limitation, and I know how this works with the developer who is in charge of landscaping the common areas. He brings in a landscape plan, it's approved or disapproved, but the end user, the homeowner, when they go to landscape their property, they're left to just hire anybody out there to landscape. They don't have the availability to the same airport recommendations and plant lists, and that's where the disconnect comes. So if all of a sudden, you've got a, you know, I don't know, I should ask Eric, a Siberian elm that grows to, you know, 150 feet, whatever they are, and they've planted it in error, they're not aware of it. So is there any way of getting that actually in the CCNRs, so the end user, when they buy that and they go to hire an independent landscaping company, they have the awareness? Because expecting people to go police that after the fact is a very difficult thing to, you know, and it shouldn't be, it's not really fair for the airport people to have to do that either. It should be stopped in the beginning.
Correct. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilwoman, agree. And I think that's something maybe we can work with the HOA on in terms of enforcing that. It is hard. You go through multiple homeowners in certain situations, and it shouldn't be the airport's responsibility, nor should it be code compliance responsibility, although that, you know, is a situation where we do that. We do commit. We will work, I will tell you, working with your city attorney, we are now more in tune with these disclosures than we ever thought we would be. So the current management and leadership, Mayor, Councilmember, I commit to you, you know, if we go through the PowerPoint, we do have all of our disclosures. They have all been updated, and we're more up to speed on our disclosures than we ever thought we would be. So we can ensure that in working with the property owners that have those height limitations, I don't know about putting them in the CCNRs per se, but I do, you know, working with the HOA, that might be the right mechanism in terms of making sure that the neighborhood is taking accountability and responsibility.
Well, that the end user is aware of that immediately, not after the fact. The second issue, real quick, and I'm gonna build on what the mayor was saying. What happened, and I wasn't planning and zoning when this issue came up several times, is the disclosure on the navigation easements. What's happened in the past, to build on what he was saying, is the chain of events. So the person goes in to buy the home. They're not aware of the navigation easement because it's not disclosed right off the bat if they don't do their due diligence. But then what happens? They put the deposit down on the home, they go to sign the papers, and if they're aware enough, out of the 150-page packet that they're gonna get, they might notice the navigation easement. Well, they may decide not to sign it at that point, but by that point, they've lost the ability to get back their down payment on the house. So my question is, how has that been corrected? Has it been corrected? Because that was, many of the constituents that I met with over this issue said to me, "I didn't get it, and when I did get it, it was too late. We were gonna lose our 20% down," or whatever it was, "by the time we saw that navigation easement."
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmember. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council member, all of these disclosures now happen within, before, when you're in contract phase, so at the beginning, not in the closing documents phase. So we have the public report, we've got the CCNRs, and those have been updated, we've got the placard on the sales office, and we also have the plat notes. And I can take you through those individually, but those are now signed and acknowledged before the seller countersigns the document, and then there is that time when you can get out of the contract and get your money back.
So when you say you've got...
So it's now at the beginning, it's at the purchase and sale agreement stage.
So when you make a statement that you've got the placard in the sales office, I'm assuming it's been framed and it's on the wall for full disclosure right off the bat?
Mayor, council member, absolutely. It is framed and on the wall, and it is something, we understand the importance of this to the community, the concern it has been to the airport, and all of our sales team is trained on ensuring that this is, again, right out of the gate, at the purchase and sale agreement stage, all of these documents are provided, acknowledged, and there is an opportunity for the potential buyer to get out of the contract and to get their money back without any penalty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Just a second. Do you have some type of a disclosure that describes what a navigation easement is? I think if you take 100 average new homeowners and said, "You're signing a navigation easement," they wouldn't have a clue what that is. So being able to have something on the wall that says, "What is a navigation easement before I buy this house?" It would be good for them to know exactly what it is.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Mayor, great question. You know, again, in the public report, it absolutely says, "Notice and disclosure is located within the vicinity of the Prescott Municipal Airport, Ernest A. Lovefield. The location will be subject to aircraft over flights, ordinance number." So we don't just say "navigation easement," because I agree with you, that is it. Those are two words that people don't use in general, you know, much like ministerial, which George and I were talking about today. It's not a word that everyone uses. So it absolutely is broken down into plain language in multiple areas, like we said, the public report, the plat, as well as the CCNRs. And it is broken down into plain language. There's also a phone number for the airport to contact if they have questions about the number of overflights, but it is, as well as the placard.
Well, I know I've heard from residents who said, "Yeah, I knew I was moving in next to an airport, but I had no idea that we're going to have overflights every 67 seconds all day long, from 6:00 in the morning until 8:00 or 9:00 at night." And sometimes you've got students learning how to fly on instrumentation. So it happens all day long, even the weekends, and it's important that they understand what a navigation easement is and what the impact is that they are agreeing to when they purchase that home and reside there. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I really appreciate your response. I would like to make a suggestion. You know, a picture's worth 1,000 words, and the airport influence area map is very simple, very clear. It's a giant rectangle, shows the airport, and it should be included, should be on your wall, should be included in all the disclosures for the people to look at, sign, and have the location of the subdivision and how it relates to the end of the runway and the fact that it's in this airport influence area. Because I think that that is full disclosure, transparency, just to include a map for people to see. And then if they call up and complain afterwards, you know, we're pretty well covered. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. George, my understanding of approval of final plat is that we're determining if it's in substantial conformance with preliminary plat?
That is correct, sir.
Is the final plat for this in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat, in your opinion?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Shishka?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd kind of like to go back to the navigation easement. I'm not so concerned with the initial sale of the house. I'm concerned with the second sale and the third sale and the fourth sale of the same house. With the navigation easement, does a signed navigation easement by the initial buyer of the house, is that, are they signing for all of the future owners of the house?
Mayor, councilman, great question. When there is a resale of the house, when you're dealing with the title company, all of the public report, the CCNRs, the navigation easement are all party to that sale. So absolutely, there will be acknowledgement as you move forward, and it will be redisclosed with the CCNRs and the public report, and the navigation easement will be part of that package every time the house is resold.
So every time someone buys the house, they have to re-sign the navigation easement?
Mayor, councilman, they don't re-sign the navigation easement, but it is absolutely disclosed to them. So the navigation easement is placed over the property. They don't re-sign it, but they will get the CCNRs and the plat note and the public report and the navigation easement. So there are four different mechanisms for notice for future home buyers.
And if I may, it's an obligation that runs with the land once signed by the initial property owner. So it's an obligation that is incurred by subsequent property owners, but they don't sign it, just like people don't sign an easement for a right-of-way easement when they buy near a road. But the obligation continues, and it becomes an obligation of the title company to disclose that as they go through the process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And how do we deal with people who lease this property? Will this type of disclosure be included in their leasing documents so that somebody who says, "I'm moving in here for a year," and then finds out that they've got these huge number of overflights, how is that going to be addressed and protected to the leasing?
And I can address this briefly, just under the state of the law. And I will say, you're not here, I don't believe they're here, on any leased properties. But they could be leased by subsequent purchasers, and there are some disclosure requirements. They're limited. And so a lessor will have to disclose the airport influence area, but that's about it. Essentially, you're near an airport. And in terms of obligations to provide termination and so forth, that's not within the state of...
So that would be for the homeowners association and the CCNRs that they'll have to abide by once they become a leasing?
If there's any CCNRs or homeowners association rules, they'd have to follow that, yeah.
How many HOAs are being planned for this entire area? Just one?
No.
Or take a minute?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I just wanted to make sure I was giving you the right answer. Right now, there is one. There could be additional in the future, but right now, there is just one.
And I would imagine, considering the total number of residential homes being built in this area, there end up being more than one.
Mayor, there could be. We don't know. There is one at this time.
Let's see. One other question I had as far as these plats, right now, both 1A and, is it 3A?
3A.
They only have one way in and one way out. And I think when the, there's going to be connections, but even looking at the extended connections, there still only seems to be one way in and one way out.
The two units will connect with their Phase 2s, Unit 2s, behind them. So the next set of plats that you see will have the street connectivity that will connect 1A and 3A together.
I mean, I was looking at the larger map, and I don't see a secondary access or exit route.
Are you referring to an access other than onto Jenna Lane? There will be two connections to Jenna Lane. Is that...
Well, 3A don't seem to be connected.
They aren't with this phase of the plats? The next phase of plats will connect them by a street?
So that would give them a secondary exit route?
It would allow 1A to exit through 3A or vice versa without, should their connection to Jenna Lane be blocked?
So what happens if the expansion of these areas doesn't occur? And you have people residing in here with only one way in and one way out?
So we have what are called financial assurances for work that's done on the property. Grading, for instance, will probably occur across the entire site rather than one final plat unit at a time. And that additional would allow us to create temporary connectivity if we need to.
Shouldn't the builders be required to put in the roads so that there is a secondary exit before they actually develop the individual lots?
Generally, that doesn't happen as part of the process because we have a...
So if you have an emergency and a fire before they go in, we're just putting all those people at risk?
Only if their one-way-in-and-out is blocked, which seems unlikely to happen in most cases.
Yeah, I think that's a concern I have, is that even though future connectivity and extra egress is planned, sometimes, I mean, let's remember what happened during the real estate meltdown in '07. Those properties in Goodyear and other places were just, they walked away from them, they never finished them until, you know, a decade later. So in the meantime, the people that bought there were in, they were in high-risk areas. And I'd want to make sure that residents out in these developed areas also have protection.
I can understand the, did you?
Yeah, just one second. Hi, Chelsea Walton, interim community development director. So to your question, Mayor, there is a temporary ingress/egress for fire access provided during the construction activities. I believe it's on the farthest west side of the development, so not on the Jenna Lane side of it, but on the west side. So there will be connectivity. It will be temporary until the other final plats come in, but that will provide that level of protection should something happen with those other phases, and then until such time, those are approved and constructed.
All right, that's a good answer.
Thank you, sir.
I know we did that for Astoria and a couple of the other developments. There was a temporary egress. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I have a question.
I think Kathy Rusing is up again. Councilmember Rusing?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask our city attorney to get with the attorney from Gammage and the builder's representative there to get everything she said today in writing and signed, because we've been here for many times where we get a sales pitch and people are very happy to tell us what we want to hear, but then we never get it in writing, and we don't have a leg to stand on. Number two, we need to have a city ordinance. We don't have a city ordinance requiring two city-dedicated streets in and out of a subdivision. So until we get that ordinance passed, we're going to just continue to see these plats where one subdivision is daisy-chained upon another, which is exactly what we have in the high-risk area off of Copper Basin Road. So I'd like to see two city-dedicated streets accessing all future plats. It's all in the name of public safety. We had that Indian Fire with Cathedral, pines, fire trucks were trying to get out, hundreds of people were trying to exit, all on that same road. So it's time that we start doing our business and taking care of the public and not leaving public safety in the hands of the developers whose only care is the bottom line. Thank you.
I've got notes, I'll look for that agreement.
Councilman Tenny?
Thank you, Mayor. Seems like each time we're asked to look at a final plat to see if it's in substantial conformity with an initial plat, this same good conversation comes up, so I really, I would echo what's been said in terms of making sure that we've got ordinances that ensure public safety. As it is, help me out, Mr. Worley, does, I'm uncomfortable being the arbiter of whether there's sufficient ingress and egress for emergency purposes, but I know we have experts who do that. Does the fire department look at these plats before they come to us and do they sign off on them?
Every department looks at and approves prior to us bringing it forward.
So once it comes to me, I can be certain that people who do this for a living, that look at emergency preparedness and emergency ingress/egress for a living have looked at and signed off, and I don't need to discuss that up here. Is that what I'm hearing you say? Personally, I don't need to. If others want to, that's fine, but that's not, that's a level that's already been taken care of by others who do that for a living, yes?
All of your departments thoroughly review preliminary plats before they come to you and final plats before they come to you.
Okay, super.
And they have to sign off before we bring them forward.
I appreciate the clarification. That said, I would be in favor of what Councilwoman Rusing has brought up and what the mayor's brought up that we ought to look at. Is it sufficient? Is what the fire department is telling us is sufficient? Is it really sufficient? And if they say, "Yeah, it is, here's why," great. If they say, "Actually, you know what? We never thought of it that way. Thanks for stepping in, Clark, and fixing it for us," then in that case, I'm happy to look at it a different way.
Councilwoman Ken Telme?
George, this might just be, this is a technical question. In some cases, when we attach stipulations to approvals, when you agree to that, it actually says that we are approving this preliminary plat with the attached stipulations. In this case, do we need to do that with the airport stuff?
In this particular case, the airport approved, subject to some of the information that you've already heard from the developer and from our city attorney. I don't believe that's a stipulated approval. I think that's something that was worked out separately. You do have an item coming up on your agenda later where there was some stipulated agreement between the developer and the airport at the planning commission, and we will discuss those specifically in that presentation.
And so they will be named in the approval, that we approve it with those stipulations?
Not for these items. You are determining substantial conformance to the preliminary plat.
But didn't they become, get into substantial conforming status with those attached stipulations?
No.
Okay.
And Councilwoman, I think that it was very important because it's part of the contract. It couldn't come forward here without compliance, and it's kind of above the final plat process and somewhat bigger than the final plat process. So the final plat would be an approval, but direction from council to not go forward with, say, building permits until, as long as we make sure that disclosures are accurate, that someone from community development go check on those, that type of direction I think is appropriate along with the approval of the plat, but it wouldn't be a stipulation or a condition on the plat.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to move forward with the motion on these two items.
Mayor, I move that we approve FMP 22-003.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. I'll entertain a motion on the other item.
Mayor, I move that we approve FMP 23-001.
Motion is second, please vote. All right, that was exciting, wasn't it? Okay, now we'll move on to the regular agenda item, 10A.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the adoption of multiple ordinances amending Prescott City Code as follows. Number one, ordinance number 2023-1842 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title V, Chapter 5-1, Section 5-1-3, amending the defenses and exceptions regarding curfew for minors. Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1844 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title V, Chapter 5-9, amending the outdoor camping ordinance. Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1845 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the Prescott City Code Title V, Chapter 5-10, Sections 5-10-2, amending the aggressive solicitation prohibited acts, and request for feedback on ordinance number 2023-1843, amending City Code Chapter 5-... 2023-1843, amending City Code Chapter 5-7, sexually oriented businesses. Please don't ever give me a title that long again, Joe.
That was very well done, city clerk. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. We have before you four ordinances today that have been before you previously in study sessions. Three of these ordinances are on for approval, for a final approval, and the fourth ordinance is on for a vote by council on the version of the ordinance that will go forward to the public, meaning we have to go through a public notice process and eventually come back for a public hearing. So that's the sexually oriented business license. So we'll go over first 5.1, curfew for minors. This was a fairly, no pun intended, minor change. But this is Section 5-1 of our city code, and specifically 5-1-3, we made an update that simply adds an exception to the curfew ordinance for those attending or commuting from an official school or religious or other civic activity. This has not changed from the version presented at study session other than to address any typos and to add a severance clause, but other than that, it's unchanged. And Mayor, I don't know if we want to go through each of the ordinances before receiving public feedback in bulk or whether to address them individually. But this is the only change for this curfew for minor, and the recommendation is we move to approve, deny, or approve with modifications.
Well, it would be my recommendation that we move through each one of these individually and approve or deny. I think that will move this issue along a little, a little more effectively. So we'll start with the curfew for minors. Do you want to describe the differences that we currently have? I think you alluded to them, but let's look at them in detail for the benefit of the public.
Yes. So the curfew for minors, excuse me, I'm pulling up the actual ordinance, but it was just that change, that there are several exceptions, and the curfew is set for those under 16, there is one curfew, and for those under 18, there's another curfew, and it's midnight. But there was no exception for those traveling to school events, for one, which was kind of the primary impetus. People are, the kids at the school will travel for sporting events, for example, or other events to cities across the state, including as far as Kingman or the east side of the state, Tucson, and they get back late. They were technically in violation of curfew. So the idea of having a lot of these kids who are involved in school or civic events that were important and having them in violation of ordinance, technically committing misdemeanors, was something we wanted just to update and fix. So we added, and I'll read the language, this is the exception to the curfew ordinance, "with prior permission of the minor's parent or guardian, the minors exempt if they were engaged in reasonable, legitimate, and specific business or activity. Examples include, but are not limited to, a minor with permission from the minor's parent or guardian attending an official school, religious, or other recreation activity supervised by adults and sponsored by the city, a school, a civic organization, or other similar entity, and takes responsibility for the minor or going to or returning home from an official school, religious, or other recreation activity supervised by adults and sponsored by the city, a school, a civic organization, or similar entity that takes responsibility for the minor." So again, the recommendations are either to approve or deny or approve with modifications, but that I think is consistent with what the city's trying to do with the ordinance.
Well, I think this is a very reasonable modification of our curfew, and we looked at this during our previous study sessions. Do we have any comments or concerns? Well, then I'll entertain a motion to, on this particular ordinance.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2023-1842.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Please vote. I notice our vote here includes all of them.
It's not. I'll do an individual vote. That's just the way that the item is showing up. As I initiate each vote, it'll do it. So this is just for 2023-1842. And Mayor, I've got yours in. So now that's all of you, and it passes 7-0.
Move on to the next ordinance, outdoor camping.
Thank you, Mayor. So as it relates to outdoor camping, we spent quite a bit of time in two separate study sessions talking about this. The goal was to expand the definition of camping and place enforceable time, place, and manner restrictions on camping. We currently have an ordinance that prohibits all camping in the city limits, no matter what. And that type of blanket prohibition on camping was struck down in the Ninth Circuit in a series of cases. So we wanted enforceable restrictions on camping that would direct our law enforcement on how they can handle such cases and provide for a safer city. So the primary, as I mentioned, goal in part was to limit congregation or gathering that can present dangers to both individuals who are either homeless or camping and present a difficult situation for law enforcement. So dealing with that, we addressed it through, excuse me, time, manner, and place restrictions. And these are the time restrictions. This is directly from the ordinance itself, and it prohibits camping during daytime hours. So that is the laying out of sleeping equipment and so forth. And between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, outdoor camping is prohibited. In terms of place restrictions, it limits the locations where one may camp within the city on pub, and this is only related to public property, by the way. So it prohibits camping at any time in the downtown entertainment district where most of the problems that law enforcement has dealt with has happened, so it is an important area to address first. It also prohibits camping at any time on sidewalks, trails, rights-of-way streets, alleys, thoroughfares, or any other area of pedestrian or vehicular traffic. This is safety-related. Within 500 feet of a preschool, kindergarten, elementary, or secondary school, or a childcare center, areas posted no trespassing by the city. And then a prohibition on camping within 500 feet of any other person who is camping unless those persons are members of the same family, or it's in part of a designated camping area. So, I'm sorry, I've went backwards each time I've done this. And then we have the manner restrictions. So this prohibits camping in a certain way, which includes any obstruction of access to private property or businesses adjacent to a public right-of-way, or maintaining a fire, or using a gas heater. And again, primarily dealing with safety and other concerns. Again, additional manner restrictions here continued. Erecting or installing some sort of semi-permanent or permanent structure, which you see essentially in, what was brought up here is tent city, but these type of serious permanent or semi-permanent structures are prohibited. Excavating or digging soil to alter the ground or infrastructure, placing or storing belongings in an area that's wider or greater than 10 square feet, and accumulating, discarding, or leaving behind garbage, debris, unsanitary hazardous materials, sewage, drug paraphernalia, or syringes in the public right-of-way on public property, or on any adjacent public or private property. And then finally, based on direction of council as we came last time, I've also left in the camping on private property, which simply limits the ability to camp on private property and often is taken care of in zoning ordinances. We don't have this covered in our zoning ordinance, but it allows for someone to camp on their own public property, but only for a maximum length of 14 days and subject to the conditions that are listed herein. I've included there in parentheses a recommendation from council to include if posted no trespassing. That's currently not in the ordinance, but if we wish, if council wishes to amend the ordinance and approve it with that modification, I've put that there. That would prohibit camping on private property only if it's posted no trespassing. So continued on camping on private property. No property owner or lawful tenant may charge rental or other fees to a person who's camping on private property. Camping on private property within the entertainment districts prohibited unless it's not visible from adjacent road or public right-of-way. Camping on private property must meet the same setbacks applicable to primary residents, and the same requirement to be free of unsanitary conditions, including garbage, debris, drug paraphernalia, syringes, is included. Now, I also here you'll see that camping in a recreational vehicle is governed in accordance with the Prescott Land Development Code. That's a code that's already in effect and prohibits camping in a recreational vehicle on private property. So that's dealt with already in the land development code. So other items in the, in this version, it includes a provision for the disposal of seized property. It shall be kept for 14 days. And we've gone through with both our rec services and police department, they have a method to be able to store this, these materials for 14 days. So anyone cited or arrested can have access to their property. And we've added a severance clause. That's the only major change since our last study session, is the addition of a severance clause. And again, update council to approve, deny, or approve with modifications.
Can you describe the severance clause and its necessity?
Yeah, severance clause, we try to include in all ordinances that we adopt, and any ordinance within the last five to 10 years will have it, but these older ordinance didn't have a severance clause. It essentially says that if any one aspect of the ordinance is ruled illegal, that the rest of it remains in effect.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I have a few questions. Under Section 5-9-1 definitions, pardon me, I turned the page. Under the second paragraph, under items 1 through 5, it says, "Public property means any public school, park, playground, splash pad, et cetera." And it says, "or property open for public use within the city of Prescott." Does that include open space? I was wondering if we should use the word open space, because the city has acquired areas such as where the Centennial Trail is. I consider that open space, but would people be allowed to park or camp there? So that's one of my two questions.
It would include open space, but including that in the definition itself as suggested modification is something we can do as well.
I just think that might be a good idea to add that.
It could be a good clarification.
Because the city has a network of just open spaces scattered throughout the city boundaries, and a lot of them aren't frequented very often and are subject to camping just based on their location. So that's just a thought, to include the word open space.
And thank you, Councilman. If it's, there's a motion to approve, I would request that it, that this be part of it, that it be approved with a modification to include the open space.
My second question has to do with this statement under Section C Manor Regulations. It says, "Nothing in this article shall be construed to criminalize homelessness, target the homeless community, or otherwise criminalize an individual's status rather than an individual's conduct." I appreciate that wording in the ordinance, but I think it also raises the question that if we're making camping difficult through this ordinance, we should also provide a solution. There should be, in this ordinance, a time or place where camping is allowed. Like, we have a lot of open space.
(applause)
I wasn't expecting that at all, but we should have a solution. We're coming up with all the knots, but we know that homelessness is an issue in our community, and what are we doing as a city to remedy that for people who truly can't find a place to stay at night or don't have a vehicle to stay in? I think we should designate a space that is owned by the city that says, "You can stay here tonight. This is a safe place where you are allowed to stay," so that we don't have this proliferation of camping all around the city. We have one space that said, "This is the designated camping space. If you have no place to go, you can go here and be safe."
All right, I'm going to ask for decorum in this, in this meeting area. We're going to be discussing a number of issues as we proceed with these ordinances that are going to be somewhat controversial. There will be people that support them, there'll be people that oppose them. But we'll have decorum here, and we're going to, I'm going to ask you not to applaud or boo or anything else. We're going to be able to discuss these issues in a reasonable way so that we can come to a conclusion. Thank you.
And so to address that, I think that if council wants to designate a certain place, that's fine. This is, ultimately, this is council's ordinance and not mine. So whatever that may be, I will say that we explored it as we were drafting it in ordinance, and it's clearly something that is allowed under the case law, the precedent sets by case law. So as an example, in Hawaii, there was a case that went up where they would have designated camping areas, and then they would switch those now and then. So people would have a camping area that they felt was, they were comfortable with, and then that would be closed, and they'd have to move to another camping area, and they brought forth the lawsuit. And that was found to be a reasonable restriction, setting a specific area. So it's allowed, it's lawful, but as we looked at doing so, the idea of designating a certain area was kind of looked down upon or looked unfavorably by any of the possible neighbors. So we didn't include it, and I think that finding an area to designate is the difficult part. But to the extent council wants to make that motion, that's, ultimately, this is a council ordinance.
Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, my concerns deal with camping on private property. I'm curious if someone were to buy a vacant parcel of land and decide that they were going to oversee the building of that structure, a structure on that vacant piece of land, and they were to park an RV or something like that on that land while they were doing that. If I'm understanding this correctly, right now it says they can't do that for more than 14 days at a time. Is that correct?
That's correct, under the way it's drafted. Now, I will say that placing an RV, as I mentioned, is covered in the land development code, and it's prohibited except in the event that some sort of catastrophe happens, destroys a house, and then-
And I understand that. I think the land development code is wrong, and I think this ordinance is wrong in that capacity, because I just, it seems like, my, my position is that we, as legislators up here, it's not our business to regulate what people do with their private property. And Arizona has a pretty storied history of not interfering with private property rights. And so if that is, if this is the will that the rest of council wants to keep this component in it, I'm a no on this.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. What Councilman Moore said resonated with me a bunch, and I really appreciate that we're not looking to criminalize status. We know that's clearly illegal and wrong, but we're looking to prohibit certain behaviors. With the behaviors that we're prohibiting here, time, place, and manner, can, again, Councilman Moore's concerned that we allow for this under certain circumstances. It seems to me that by definition, it's written in that there are certain circumstances that people could camp in the city of Prescott. Can you give us a couple of scenarios, one or two scenarios under which it would be legal? Because I agree, I have, I do have some concerns about concentrating in that in one place, either temporarily or permanently, for the reasons that you brought up. But, but people could do that in a dispersed manner? Under what circumstance? As long as they're 500 feet away from people who aren't related to them, they could be where, at what times of day, and do what things?
So there are areas, and open space was brought up, and primarily that's one of them. It would, open space in some different park areas. The answer is, when can it be done? Between 8, in the evening and 8:00 in the morning, not on a public right-of-way within 500 feet of another person in the downtown entertainment district.
So most parts of Prescott, in the evening time, when people are typically sleeping, as long as they're not in public right-of-way, it would be legal for a person to camp, to act as homeless people need to act. They need to live and be someplace. I totally agree with that. So again, without, it sounds to me, though, and help me out if I'm wrong, that we're not criminalizing status, but we are prohibiting behavior in ways that are generally accepted to be the most impactful on the community as a whole. Is that a fair characterization?
I think that's a fair characterization, and a large part of, a lot of the provisions, including the no camping between, during daylight hours, is an attempt to limit the tent cities, or the congregating, or the creation of kind of semi-permanent structures, which presents a- which presents a lot more problems, and both for law enforcement and for safety. But we cannot, based on Supreme Court and Ninth Circuit precedent, we cannot just criminalize the act of being homeless. But we can set these sorts of restrictions so it prevents the most egregious or problematic problem that's from happening.
Gotcha. So what, what Councilman Moore said that really resonated with me is, we need to have built-in the ordinance, what people can do. It sounds like effectively it is built in, what people can do. Is that, is that fair?
That is fair. There is still an opportunity to live while being homeless, and that shouldn't be criminalized. But there are certainly restrictions through the ordinance, and restrictions even on private property somewhat, under the way it's currently drafted.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to make the comment as to Mr. Montoya. I agree, I think if someone's building a home and they, they want to live in an RV on the site for maybe a year, is there any way we could just issue a permit allowing that use?
We, we do, in limited circumstances, we could expand that. That would be an update to our Land Development Code, and we, if that's the direction I'm hearing, then that's something I can start working on.
Okay, because I think our goal here is to be compassionate, but also realize that living on the streets is, is not a solution. And for example, we support our homeless veterans in this community, and we just approved a 80-unit apartment complex on the VA for, to accommodate homeless veterans so they can be in the VA community and receive care and be in a safe place. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kentelme.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've received a lot of emails from all of you out there, and I'm going to respond to all of you as soon as I can. But I do want to, one of the reoccurring questions was exactly what I think Eric just spoke about, is why can't the city provide an acre or two for a designated camping area? So here's my question to our attorney. Number one, who pays for it? Do we put that on the taxpayer? Number two, what is our liability if we were to do that? And number three, how do we deal with the abusers of this? I know that there was a short stint with CC&J several years ago, provided camping in a thrift store parking lot, I believe. And at that time, I was doing the research of what, how much the tax on the services was, and, and I don't mean tax as in a tax, a tax, how did it tax our services and loosening them up for taxpayers that needed, you know, their care? So how do we deal with the cost, number one? What is the liability? And how do we deal with the abusers of this program if we were to allow that? Because there is a cost. You've got porta-potties, you've got cleanup, you've got potential fencing. The police and the fire have to service this population a lot. So do we, as the taxpayer, voluntarily step up to the plate and pay for that? I mean, how do we address it?
It's a bigger problem than I can solve.[815.23][815.23](LAUGHTER) But if the question is, can we designate an area and allow for camping, the answer is yes. Who pays for it? The city, and it obviously would be through taxpayer funding. And the question on liability is, would we be liable, potentially? I would say that recreational immunity probably applies if we're just making a piece of property available for use and allowing camping. It probably applies, so there's probably some immunity there. But we're still subject to reasonableness, and so there is potentially liability. But to answer your first two questions, the city pays. And I think you said, who enforces it, or how do we deal with abusers? And that would be another ordinance or policy we'd have to draft and try and figure out how we work through that.
There is some, there was a case in Oregon where they did something very similar to clean out an area, and they provided a public place for, and I don't remember how big the situation was, but they did fence it, and two people were assaulted, one was killed, and they ended up suing the municipality and got a million and a half dollar judgment. So that, those are the things I think about. It's like, do we do that to the taxpayer? I know we want to help them, and we don't want to criminalize homelessness, we really don't. I get that. But we also have to be realistic about the cost to the taxpayer. Do we inadvertently put the city in that kind of jeopardy if we can't handle this thing correctly? So I'd like to just say, let's take a pause to everybody that's emailed about the city providing these services and understand the realities of that. It's a cost, it's a liability, it's a strain on the services. And then we've got, you've got the issue of the NIMBYs, not in my backyard. How are we going to deal with those sorts of things, too? So these are just foods for thought. We just have to think this through. Thank you.
Well, I will weigh in on this by saying, I think we should consider this particular ordinance, and if we want to look at another ordinance later on, creating potentially a very short-term temporary camping area, that should be a separate issue that we could discuss and decide whether the city wants to create such a location. So trying to amend the ordinance that we're talking about today to add this into it, I think is premature, and we don't really have the necessary information to even consider, considering adding this to this current ordinance that we're considering on adopting. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an additional comment about open space. Often, open space is designated as open space because of its environmental value. There's usually something unique or special about it that we want to preserve. That's why we made it open space. So I think it would be wrong, obviously, to allow camping in those locations. So I just want to make that comment. I appreciate what the mayor just said. You know, if we were trying to consider the ordinance as it's written, I don't think we could move forward with it today unless we are willing to make a commitment that we're going to come back with maybe further discussion on designating, you know, I mean, it tells us where people can't camp, but I'm having a hard time figuring out where people can camp, I guess is my, my concern with this ordinance as it's written. And I just feel like that's something that needs to be addressed as well. I've already said that, but I'm having a hard time saying, should we move forward with a vote today, or should we table this to a future discussion? I'm just kind of torn there.
City Attorney, you mentioned the possibility of posting no trespassing on some of these private property areas. What positives or negatives would such a posting create?
I think in a lot of ways, it would create some hardship on private property owners to require them to be, to post no trespassing. If we adopted the language that states if posted no trespassing, that's essentially what we do, we would be stating something that we can't do, which is any private, or any individual can go camp on someone else's private property unless they post no trespassing. So I think that would be the major problem with requiring a posting of no trespassing.
Wouldn't it be beneficial for enforcement so that if a police officer was called in to look at someone potentially camping on private property who did not have permission, and there was no homeowner present, or president or property owner present to be able to confirm or deny that that camper had approval? Wouldn't a posting like this be able to allow the police officer to be able to remove that person?
Well, I think requiring a posting like this actually adds just one additional element to removing someone. So you'd have to find that there was a no trespassing sign before removing someone from someone else's property. Whereas if there wasn't the requirement, they, if police responded to a trespasser, they would just remove as a trespasser. So I think it actually adds one element, one more element to enforcement, and it makes it a little bit more difficult.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I just looked, Amazon is selling no trespassing signs for 97 cents. So I, I mean, that, 97 cents, I'm sure there are folks who that's a hardship for. I guess my, my question is, if someone camps on my property right now, and they don't have my permission, and I see them camping on my property, is my recourse not to call the police and say someone is trespassing? And wouldn't the police respond in that case to say, "You don't have permission to be here and you need to leave"?
Right, that's accurate. If someone camps on your private property, they are trespassing if they don't have your permission.
All right, so if my son-in-law comes to visit me one day when my wife, my daughter gets married and comes back to visit me, and they're on a cross-country trip, and they're driving their RV with their grand, my grandkids, and they want to stay and park in front of my, you know, on my, on my property for 15 days, they're criminals, though. Is that correct?
Not if they have your permission. Or if it's 15 days, yes, at the 15th day.
Okay, so they are, they are. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
I, I think we should leave the ordinance as written as far as the no trespassing sign. It just, as the ordinance is written, if it's private property and someone's camping there, then the owner's contacted, and you find out if they have permission or not. I mean, that burdens all the owners of vacant land who may live out of town, having to go around and post everything with no trespassing signs, and that would probably trigger a need to clean up all the no trespassing signs because they're going to start looking like campaign signs all over the place.
Councilmember Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with what's been said about the extra layer of having to post a no trespassing sign to keep someone from your property, right? In ordinance, the way it is right now, people are not allowed to trespass without us posting a sign, and it seems to, I mean, though it's only 97 cents, totally get that. We shouldn't need to do that to, to make it clear for people that, I don't want them camping in my front yard. Unless it's my son-in-law, I guess I'd be okay with that for 14 days.[1306.51][1306.51](LAUGHTER)
And if I could address the private property, kind of the thought behind it, or what I think the thought was when, the direction was to keep it in, is that for some houses, for example, that may have issues, safety issues, they'll be camping in the front yard, and it really becomes a problem for neighbors, having people camp in the front yard. Now, having said that, it is somewhat controversial to regulate use on, of private property. And we do it all the time through zoning and so forth. That's why it's kept in, if there's a motion to approve without the private property, that's your, within your purview. But I just wanted to give a little background on why it was included, or why I think the direction was to leave it in, was for those situations. And again, if the direction is to address that more specifically through the Land Development Code, we can do that as well.
Well, I don't think the 14-day restriction on RVs on private property is unreasonable. However, I, I do have a certain amount of sympathy for the Mayor Protem's family.
They're phantom now at this point. My daughter's 17, so...
Well, that's, that's reassuring.[1384.83][1384.83](LAUGHTER) But I, I do have some concern about someone who may be in the process of building a home, if they have acquired permits for building, and they want to be able to protect their home site as it's being built, and being able to provide some allowance for that beyond 14 days, it seems like that could be handled in some kind of a special way.
And I will say that within the county's ordinance dealing with this, they do allow for someone who's building their home to live on the property in an RV, and there's some other additions. Now, within the city, it's only if you've built a home and it's destroyed. So I just, that's limited currently. But what I'm hearing, or if I'm hearing it, we can come back to council amending that provision in the Land Development Code to be similar to the county's allowing someone who's building a home owns the property to have some sort of RV for a certain period of time. And I think it's generally a year.
That kind of helps my decision process. I would say no to the trespassing posting. I would say yes to referencing open space and amending the wording to include that. I would, I would say no to the designated camping area, just because I think it leads to some really potential problem areas with tent cities and, and long-term accumulation of concentrated camping issues. I know we're required to kind of keep track of how many available beds are available at any particular time, so that we can show that we're taking, making an effort to find some accommodation for homeless people. But there are some people that don't want to follow those rules. So they're not willing to accept a bed in some of those areas or facilities that require certain agreements on how they are going to be accommodated. And then we can keep the RVs in at 14 days and work on amending the Land Development Code for longer-term legitimate uses. So that's, that's my thought. Councilwoman Kentelme.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I wanted to find out, too, if, if this, if something did occur, and you go, let's say you get sued, isn't there something in the law that says you have to have, they're going to ask you, "Did you have a no trespassing sign posted?" Because isn't that part of your defense?
This may be off-topic a little bit in the overall scheme, but for individuals that put no trespassing, it gives them certain protections against a licensee argument. There's a presumed license for allowing people to come on your property, for example, walk to your front door. So it would, it eliminates that presumed license, and it does provide extra protections. But I think it's beyond the scope of here. I think in this case, there's no presumed license that someone can sleep on your property. So it, it wouldn't be needed in this, in that case.
And also, on the, on the issue of permitting, couldn't they just get a renewal? If, if somebody, if, if Montoya's grandchildren came to visit him and they wanted to stay for 20 days, couldn't they just go down and renew the permit if they really had to?
Not as it's currently written, because there's no permit. There's just an allowance for short-term stays. And to be honest, you kind of picture some small kids camping in their backyard. So if we prohibited private, private property camping, we'd also prohibit a few people sleeping in their backyard and that type of thing. So I think there needs to be an allowance, if we're going to deal with private property, there needs to be allowance for people to camp on private property to some extent. Where we draw the line there is up to council. We have the recommendation of 14 days. But when it comes to permitting, that would be the additional follow-up step that I think we're getting direction for, which is to deal with in the Land Development Code, go through a permit process to allow for longer-term stays on private property in legitimate circumstances. I think the mayor said, and we'd have to define what legitimate means.
And Brandon might want them to go home after two weeks.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. So Joe, how did we come up with the 14 days? Was that a reaction to possibly having people buy a lot and then putting their RV on there and just live it in the RV?
I don't think it was a reaction to that, but I think that illustrates one potential issue. I think the bigger issue is really tent camping in front yards. That was an issue we've seen as a problem. And why does, why 14 days? Because it's consistent with many other jurisdictions, especially when it deals with an RV on personal property and other things. So 14 days was, there's nothing magic in 14 days, but it was based on other ordinances in other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make one last comment. Overall, I'm generally in favor with the ordinance. I think it's 95% rate on target. I think the only, maybe if, if we're not going to address, in this ordinance, I understand we, we can't probably, but if we can't address designating a place for camping, is it possible that the police department could, if they come across a person that's camping somewhere, they could hand them a map and say, "This is where you can camp in the city," because we, we tell them where they can't camp? But can we, can we maybe help them find a place where they can camp that's safe? And I would be happy with this ordinance. I, I just think that's my suggestion, is just a little map, or just a little something that, you know, "You guys can't camp in this area." Most homeless people will never read this ordinance. They won't know where they can and can't camp. And so we need to provide them with the resources of knowledge of where they can camp, and that's all I'm asking. And I'm willing to vote for this ordinance if we could do something like that. Thank you.
And I'll answer, we can. There's a, there's a cost. If this is the direction from council, ultimately, as I mentioned, this is council ordinance, and if that's the direction, we can figure out a way to deal with that. And we could do so by just having a map of the city with... city with some of the public areas, and showing the areas where it's not allowed, and directing that. You know, right-of-ways, we have no right-of-ways at any time. The right-of-ways are one of the bigger issues. We'll see camping on right-of-ways, sidewalks, for example. And so oftentimes, when the police are dealing with it, it's really, "Hey, you can't camp here on the sidewalk." But if the direction is to also include a map of, "You can't sleep on the sidewalk, but you can go over, here's some different places," that is something we could do.
I think that's just a humane, kind way of handling. Homelessness will never go away. We're going to constantly have this issue in our community, and we're not trying to criminalize it. But I think we need to be humane and kind, and we need to offer an option, and that's all I'm saying.
Councilmember Rusing.
In response to Councilman Moore, there already is a map. In fact, it does more than just list camping. It lists food banks, social services, homeless shelters, and it's available at the library. We also have a part-time person that's employed at the library, who is a great resource, not just to homeless, but to anybody that comes in with a problem. For example, if you're a homeless person, if there was a homeless person and they needed a bike to get around, they had a job, and this person found them a bike. So we do already offer that to the community.
Okay, I think we need to call the question here.
Mayor, we actually have public comment on the specific ordinance that we would need to take before you guys can vote on it. I do have one comment card that specifically addressed that this individual wanted to speak on this ordinance, and then I have two that did not specify. So I'm curious if Whitney Williams and Patty Willis wanted to speak on this or on the last item for consideration.
I'm Whitney Williams, and I'll do the last.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Debbie Willis, the last.
Okay, thank you very much. So then it's just Peggy Glenn, please.
I thought it would work until I stepped on it. Hello, everybody. Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilmembers, city staff. The irony that this ordinance is up today, when you gave a proclamation to Meals on Wheels and the Agape House, blows my mind. I would say that this is a good start, but I would say it's premature and not ready to put it in the oven. I think there's a lot of work that's gone into it. By the way, there's a typo in trespassing. Only one S in the beginning. Camping, for some, is survival. For others, it's the only option they have right now. And I'm a little confused about daylight hours when you say 8:00 to 8:00, and we're at this latitude as opposed to the equator where we, what about dawn to daylight, or dawn to dusk? You know, it seems it's a little more easy to recognize if someone doesn't have a watch, doesn't have a cellphone. They don't know what time it is, just an idea. I would challenge the council and city staff to go back to the table and use the knowledge that is part of what CCJ is doing, PASS is doing, Agape House is doing. They find a way to take care of the abusers, to take care of the people who can't follow the rules. They simply don't get to stay there, and we find an option for the other there. I would challenge you to put together a coalition. I'm talking straight to a couple of you who seem to have your humanity clicked in right now. A coalition of faith-based people, the nonprofits in this city who do a fabulous job but are stretched almost beyond their limits, the Chamber of Commerce, because this isn't a good look for everybody's hometown, realtors, the guy said decorum. Please give me a shot at it. Thank you. The developers, the workerbees in this town. We don't have anything even coming close to affordable housing, much less survival housing. If this is going to be everybody's hometown, it's not just for the rich people. I'm really not trying to stir up trouble. I'm trying to come to you with pieces of thought and heart. Bottom line, I challenge you to take this back to the table and come up with Councilman Moore's alternative, Councilman's Moore's humane alternative before this is adopted. I think it's a great start and not ready for the oven. Thank you for the time.
That's all on this one, Mayor.
Okay, then I think we need to call the question here. I would propose that we adopt this ordinance and amend it to include describing open space, as Councilman Moore indicated. And the rest of it can be presented and voted on as written, and then we'll take a look at a different time on how we would go about possibly designating a rotating camp area or something like that. And I think RVs on private property are reasonable, especially since we're referencing other ordinances in other municipalities that have been able to maintain those and pass kind of judicial or legal challenges.
Mayor, are you making a motion? And if so, are you suggesting that the parenthetical expression, "If posted no trespassing," be eliminated?
Yes.
I'm proposing that we correct the spelling.
I'm with you there, if we include it. Was that a motion that you made, and you're looking for a second?
I made that motion.
Okay.
Can I clarify on the "if posted no trespassing"? That would be an amendment. It's in there just for informational purposes. Are you requesting that it not be in there, or that it be in there? Sorry.
I'm requesting that it not be in there.
Mayor, I second your motion.
All right, we have a motion and second. Please vote.
Councilwoman Ken, tell me. Can you vote, please? Is that a yes? Pass the 6-1.
Move on to, what is it, aggressive panhandling?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Aggressive solicitation. I am now, sorry. So the aggressive solicitation ordinance was brought to you in study session with a few changes, not a whole lot, but they dealt with the other prohibited acts. So Section 5.10, or 5-10-1, is the definition of aggressive solicitation, includes quite a few definitions. That wasn't changed at all. But in Section 5-10-2, it deals with other prohibited acts. So aggressive solicitation, or soliciting in aggressive manner, is prohibited, along with several other prohibitions, including soliciting someone within a certain distance from a bank, from an ATM, from a business entrance or exit, from people engaging in financial transactions and so forth. So based on the study session, we standardized that to 50-foot prohibition. So it has to be 50 feet from someone engaged in using a bank or ATM. It has to be 50 feet from someone that is engaged in a financial transaction and so forth. So that's all standard, except for, we reduced the amount of distance based on First Amendment concerns of solicitation from someone immediately adjacent to the entrance or exit of any commercial business or privately-owned establishment. And that was done primarily in recognition of some of the areas within the city, and primarily downtown, that are, where the entrances are closer than 50 feet. So it would have caused a prohibition, if we had a 50-foot prohibition, it would have created essentially a no solicitation zone, which I think was beyond the scope of what we could do or should do under the First Amendment. So those were, those changes were suggested from the last version, and that has been drafted and implemented into this version. And the major change is a prohibition on solicitation from moving vehicles. And that was presented in the study session and remains here. And other than that, and as I mentioned, an addition of a severance clause, it's the same as the version that was brought to you in study session. So again, this would be for final adoption, and a request for a motion to approve, deny, or approve with modifications.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Joe, I have three questions, actually. Section D, when it says 50 feet of an entrance and/or exit of commercial business, I assume you're meaning a building and not the parking lot. I just think, I'm wondering if that should be more clear, if you're talking about the building or the parking lot, because I think that's a difference. As a small business owner, I was in a shopping center for many years, and there was lots of people soliciting in that parking lot, but they weren't necessarily near the entrance of the building. So I just, I think that needs to be clearer. And then another question, are shopping centers considered private property? Because I says "on private property," with the express written permission and consent of the owner or other person legally in possession of such property. Because oftentimes, a shopping center, the owner is some out-of-state legal entity where they don't have a local presence that is going to enforce that. So I'm just wondering how that's going to be handled. And my third question, I'm sorry, I've got three issues. Under camping, it said that each day that a person was, found camping, that each new day would be a new violation. And I was wondering, with this ordinance, does there need to be similar wording, that each day that a violation of this section continues or occurs shall constitute a separate offense? Because people who solicit are generally habitual solicitors. That's what they do every day. That's how they make their living. But it was addressed in camping, but it wasn't addressed in solicitation. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed in this ordinance, because it isn't.
So to address your questions, the question on D, the entrance or exit from a commercial business, that is the private property entrance, not the actual building. Now, and so there is private property that is covered in I, as you mentioned, and this was, and I actually forgot that this was an addition or a tweak from the previous version study session based on input, and we required express written consent, so that we could enforce. So if there is solicitation on a parking lot, for example, officers can go and make sure that they have permission, written permission from the owner, because there are absentee owners. So it deals with that issue. So I think those are the answers on the first two questions. On the third one, on the each day, camping was treated differently because there is, in something like solicitation, there's an instance. In each instance, each solicitation would be its own violation of the ordinance, whereas camping is a more long-term duration. So someone may solicit all day, but that would technically be several violations. The police, obviously, would probably see one and enforce that one. But each instance of solicitation would be a violation of the ordinance, whereas in camping, we don't want to criminalize each head nod or some other variation, and a day just made sense in that instance.
Thank you for that clarification. That makes sense to me.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I look at this as a public safety issue, panhandling from moving vehicles. I've seen panhandlers sitting on the curb on the, by the Big O Tire Store, they're on Iron Springs in Yale Gardner, right on the curb, while people are trying to make right turns. Just recently, my husband and I, there was a lady who was clearly disabled lying on the sidewalk there at Five Points, and we had to stop and pull over and help her over to a bench by the Boy Scout statue there. So I feel that adding the prohibition to solicit from a moving vehicle is a good thing. It prevents traffic accidents and injuries, and maybe deaths to the panhandlers. Thank you.
Well, are there any other comments or concerns? Well, then I'll entertain a motion on approving this ordinance.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2023-1845.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on this?
Not on this one, Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Was an easy one. Okay, what's up next?
Thank you, Mayor. The next is sexually-oriented businesses, which may not be quite as easy. And in part, it's not in a final form. It needs to go to public comment. It needs to be published, and I expect we'll receive more comment as we go through the process. All right, we have brought this to council before in a study session and sought some direction. And this here, I just wanted to go over some of the effect of the original or the last version that was brought to council, and that was an addition of certain covered businesses to include massage parlors, adult entertainment entities, and body painting studio. And as we mentioned when we came last time, massage parlors was an attempt not to regulate massage therapy, but certain businesses that have become, or we are ripe for abuse within the city and within the state. Adult entertainment entities was to cover traveling shows, or shows that are not in a permanent location. And bodies painting studios, I guess, self-explanatory. Now, it also increases coverage of the adult bookstore, novelty stores, and video stores to include all stores, and no longer requires that such activity constitutes a primary purpose of that business. So that was the expansion of the definition of adult bookstore, novelty store, or video stores. And the primary prohibition is to eliminate or limit minors from entering sexually-oriented businesses. We also amended various definitions within 572, which is the definition sections. And so the next section is some of the changes from the previous draft. So I didn't make substantive changes, but I did make smaller changes that were consistent with what I felt the direction was, to clean up the ordinance a little bit. And part of the direction from council was that some of these newly-regulated businesses shouldn't be restricted to only industrial zones. They're not necessarily in the same category as Cabaret, which is a strip club, or adult theaters, or so forth. So in order to do that, we cleaned up, in the latest version, some of the restrictions on zoning to make it clear that as long as it's not within a residential zoned area, those businesses can be allowed. And there was previously a prohibition on being adjacent to a residential district. We removed that for those limited businesses. The newest draft also removes the licensing requirement for part-time employees and employees of adult novelty stores. Now, this was unclear whether this is the council direction or not. I wasn't sure. So we included that in the draft, and essentially, it removes kind of the heavy burden for part-time employees and for businesses that engage in the sale of adult novelty stores. Given that includes all adult, or any business that sells adult novelties, it removes that requirement. And the newest draft, as I mentioned, cleaned up some of the remaining consistencies in some other portions of the ordinance towards that direction that council gave.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I have a clarity question here. What defines an adult novelty store?
So it's defined, but, and maybe I, it's best if I just read. Yeah, so it's, but it's a store that sells books, magazines, or other printed matter, you know, pornography, and any instrument or devices or paraphernalia which are designed for use in connection with specific sexual activities.
So would that include condoms?
It would, under that definition. It's a pretty broad definition. It's a pretty broad definition, it would include.
Because there's a lot of places in Prescott that sell condoms.
Yes. And so, and that's why I have, and I think it's important to address that, and whether that's the direction council wants to go. But I put here specific modifications that council may or may want and not want to do, and I think it's important to address. And the first one is whether to reinstate the threshold for qualifying as an adult novelty store. Now, the previous version, I feel like, is enforceable. It said one of the primary purposes, and what does that mean? It's not defined. So having a threshold, I do think, makes some sort of sense. I put 20% there, I don't know what it may be, that's council decision, but there may want, you may want to consider whether it should be limited to a certain percentage of the business. Again, one of the complaints we've heard is that these adult entertainment is defined as being of an erotic nature, and erotic is also defined. And removing that definition of erotic, because it refers to a definition in a Supreme Court case, which is hard to define. Obscenity is, the first Supreme Court says obscenity is, I can't define it, but I know when I see it. But secondary, but subsequent cases defined it as appealing to the purian interest and not, which is also difficult to define. So it may be, in terms of enforcement, easier to remove the erotic altogether and focus on that which is easy to find, which is nudity, semi-nudity, and specified sexual activity, and have the businesses that may have one or all of these aspects qualify, rather than something of an erotic nature. There's, based on input, bring forward to you the question of whether, I think it's clear from council direction that minors, that we feel minors should not be allowed in sexually oriented businesses. The question becomes whether minors that have parental consent or accompanied by minors should be allowed in, and that's a question that you may.
By parent.
I misspoke. And whether to, or whether to reinstate licensing requirement for all employees. As I mentioned, that was removed in the latest draft, and whether council wants to reinstate that aspect. And we heard other various feedback, and I think a lot of it was addressed in trying to clarify the zoning issues for some of the newer businesses being regulated, and the employees' issue of requiring licensing. But there remains some. I did hear regarding massage parlors, for example. And I, one recommendation, and it was after I drafted this, but I think it would be important, is that a final draft to be sent to the public if approved, changed the section 5720, which gives exceptions for licensed massage therapists. And it does have sort of a outdated definition of the licensing requirement, refers to the Arizona State Board of Education, I believe. And I think that our recommendation, if approved, would be an exception for, and make it basic to those licensed under the state board of massage therapy. And remove kind of the requirements, like the 500 hours of education, we'd remove that, because that's a requirement by the state board of education, let them deal with that. Although I will say, there was some feedback on whether the word massage at all, including that in, in the sexually oriented businesses, in massage parlors, would adversely affect those who engage in legitimate massage therapy, because the name is somewhat tainted. And I think that's well taken, but I think as long as we're not trying to regulate those licensed under the state, it probably continues to, to forward the directive of council. So at this point, I think that there'd probably be a healthy discussion, and I'd like to hear from council. And the approval, and I think we need a vote to do so, and it will help narrow down what the version looks like that goes to the public, but it will be next sent to publication and then come back for a public hearing.
To answer your question, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I think, so is it, is it, at this point, I guess, Joe, if I'm understanding correctly, right now, there is no threshold as it's currently written?
That's correct.
And so, just double checking to clarify my understanding. So under the ordinance that we're looking at voting to send to publication right now, the Maverick that's on Roost Street, if they happen to sell condoms qualifies as an adult novelty store?
I think it would qualify as written. So either, and this is your decision, but there are two ways we could deal with it, would be to exclude condoms from the definition of paraphernalia, or to have some sort of threshold of a qualification.
It's, condoms is less of my concern. I guess my concern is that it starts to, like, casting too broad of a net with this ordinance, to me, seems unwieldy. And, and it takes, it creates a problem of enforcement that becomes unreasonable. The idea that, you know, I think, my opinion, from where we stand right now, based on what I've read of the ordinance, is, is that it is both too broad and yet too specific at the same time, in really unique ways. I also think that, as it's written right now, unless you were to add in that exception around the percentage, and I don't know if, I have no basis to know why 20%, so I don't even know if that's appropriate or not. But I think it becomes a situation where you're creating an undue piece of regulation, in my opinion. And that's not, that's not what we really ought to seek to do. I think, I think this needs to, I think this needs more consideration, personally. And I don't think it's ready for publication, because it's just, there's too many components here that I don't want to criminalize, like, you know, I don't, I don't want to put Walmart in a situation where suddenly they become an adult novelty store overnight because they happen to sell condoms, or sexual lubricant, or any number of items that might rise to the standard of that. It just seems like we're falling down a slippery slope, in my opinion.
Well, Mayor Protem, I, I agree with you on a number of issues. Some of these descriptions and definitions are very hard to legitimately define. And I think anything that's made available for the public for health and safety issues, contraception, different things like that, are not intended to fall into this category and shouldn't. Clearly, condoms and spermicides and other contraceptives have a legitimate healthcare prevention aspect to them. And they're not intended to be the kinds of material that juveniles should be exposed to. I think they should be aware of what, what is available, when and if they become sexually active, and they want to make sure, along with their parents, that they don't make mistakes that can affect their health and their, and their future. So I agree with you. We wouldn't want to have those included and then have every Walmart or Circle K be restricted on being able to provide those reasonably and necessary health products. You know, the 20% issue, that's very, very difficult to be able to ascertain. But I think being able to make sure that minors are not either intentionally or accidentally exposed to some of these other material, and being able to make that an adults-only restricted area, we will have, I mean, we do have a couple of retailers that provide some of these things, that minors can easily be exposed to. And I know there's many places in the country that either restrict entrance to adults only, or they put this material behind some type of a barrier, so that, you know, accidental exposure to a minor is, is not, not going to occur. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. I also agree that having a heavy background check and licensing and licensing costs for part-time employees that are hourly workers in some of these places doesn't make any sense either. But I think the owner who is going to be operating these retail locations should be able to know that they have to follow these restrictions and rules, and, and we want to make sure that they're operating in a, in a legal and, in appropriate manner. I know there was one reference here about being close to a location that was selling alcohol. And I think having a location that's near a pizza parlor that has beer and wine shouldn't be restricted from that. I know we have a couple of retailers that currently are offering some of these things, so I think there probably needs to be some consideration for grandfathering of those locations, because I wouldn't want someone who invested in putting in a business and it's operating effectively, all of a sudden have this go into effect and they feel that they have to close shop and, and move somewhere else. So I think you're right, we're, there's a lot of things that we want to look at here, and before we craft this into a final ordinance, they have to be considered. I think any type of a law, and an ordinance is certainly a law, you have to ask yourself, well, what if? What if this happens, or what if this happens? And how can we have a reasonable definitions and reasonable regulation that protects the minors in our community and, but also offers reasonable access for adults?
And Mayor, if I could address a couple of those issues that you brought up. I think the first question about minors viewing kind of adult novelty items, it can be dealt with in some ways through the, this ordinance, but also, we could have a prohibition on having those types of items in the, in the view of minors, without classifying those stores as sexually oriented businesses, which might be a way to go, depending on how council wants to do it. But that's another option. And just to clarify on the, some of these location-specific items, like being near a liquor store and being adjacent to a property line, that was removed through 5712I for adult novelty or bookstores, massage parlors, adult entertainment entities, removed the, removed those requirements, like being close to liquor and so forth, removed them from those requirements. But there still are certain requirements, clearly.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I'd just like to make two comments. I'd like to direct your attention to page 20. Item G refers to the date, February 10th, 1998. I'm thinking maybe we might want to update that to at least 2023.
And I will say, that wasn't a typo, but it is a consideration, and I think that it's one of those things we debated, and quite frankly, based on council direction change, updating that could be helpful.
All righty. And then, thank you. And then the other one is, currently, we have the sexually oriented businesses restricted to industrial zoned areas, which also conforms with the county zoning, they do the same thing. And I'm concerned that if we open it up to everywhere that's not residential, that we may create an area that's kind of like a strip, as I remember in front of a lot of military bases. And for example, business general zoning does include residential, and we have strip zoning all up and down Gurley that's all business general. And I'm concerned that that would create adult-oriented businesses all up and down our main drag. Also, we have a medical building, medical office, and according to, if we allow it in business general zoning, we could potentially have sexually oriented businesses next to our medical office, which I don't think would be a plus for our property values. So I personally do not support changing this. I would just like to delete all of paragraph I and keep it the same as industrial zoned areas. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may say, I understand that, and I will say, though, that the exception from being only in zoning industrial is only for those limited, those three business types, not all business types, but, and also, section C in that same section, 5712C, does prohibit sexually oriented businesses from being within 500 feet of another business. So it will still deal with the idea of having sort of a red light district or a strip of such businesses, but that doesn't.
I'm sorry, it just says sexual, other sexually oriented businesses, it doesn't say just regular businesses.
Right. So it would be 500 from other sexually oriented businesses to then.
Oh, I see.
The point to prevent sort of a.
Would still be next to my medical office.
You may have one next to your medical office, but you won't have a whole strip of them.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think that I saw a lot of letters from folks who ended their letter, we need to protect our youth. Well, and I would agree with that, but I also think that no one wants the Prescott City Council in their bedroom. And so, you know, we, we need to really be careful, we're not chasing our tail here. Swatting a fly with a sledgehammer instead of a fly swatter. You know, you swat a fly with a sledgehammer, there's probably going to be a lot of collateral damage. And I think that we need to really, really consider and listen to the public today. I think it's really important to just put this all in perspective, for God's sakes. I, I think that, that trying to regulate people's choices, you know, our whole, our whole economy is built on choice. And I think that, that by limiting choice, we're going to run into a real problem. And, you know, I, I also think that, whose, whose judgment is it that it's erotic? I mean, I had a professor who wouldn't let women who wore knee-length skirts sit in the front row, because he was tempted to look up their dress. Well, the truth of the matter is, again, who is judging whether something is erotic or not? That certainly, you know, wasn't to a normal person. But I think that we need to really, really, really take an account on what you folks say, and how you would like to see us deal with this situation. Because again, Prescott City Council has no place in your bedroom.
I don't think there was a single reference in this proposed ordinance with bedrooms. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Reading this proposed ordinance was quite a slog, there was a lot of material. And I have to say that I really appreciated Mayor Protem's comments, that in a lot of ways, it's too broad, in a lot of ways, it's too specific. And I think the conclusion that I've come to is, as an elected body of a municipality, we have limited powers, we have powers, but where do you draw the line? We're trying to protect children from pornography, for example. Well, how many children access pornography every day on their phones, on their computers? And we're trying to prevent people from having access to maybe products of a sexual nature that they can just buy on the internet, if they can't buy it at a store. If you're going to prohibit them from buying at a store, they can just go online and buy it. So are we going to start policing the internet in Prescott, too? And are we going to start, you know, seeing what people are prohibiting what they buy online? I feel like this ordinance is just too broad, and we're getting out in the weeds as a city council. And I think we need to be really careful because of people's First Amendment rights and privacy rights, that we're getting on the fringe of that.
Well, I do want to mention the fact that we've had this ordinance in effect since 1998. Was it before then? I think that was the last time it was amended.
That was the last time it was updated.
Okay, so we're not creating something brand new. We're just trying to bring it up to some reasonable current standard. And speaking of that, I just want to let you know that the Diamondbacks were ahead 1 to 0 over the Phillies after the first inning. Councilwoman, can tell me?
Okay, so where do we go from here? I'm confused. For clarity, we're not going to scrap the whole thing. We're talking about move to approve with some modifications. Have we all agreed on those modifications? How do we go forward?
And if there's, if you feel it's too, too many modifications, I would still like a vote on modifications to bring back to you. But it can either be a vote on modifications to incorporate and bring back to you, or modifications to then go forward. to then go forward and publish to the public.
Well, so the qualifying 20%, can we just start with that one? If you're talking about Walmart and their little small section of condoms, and in relation to that giant store, I'm just going to take a guess, it's probably 1% of the business. I mean, how do we move forward on just that, reinstate the threshold for qualifying as an adult novelty store for 20%? Is that safe to do that?
That's a threshold that's used in some jurisdiction, and 20% is also used not specifically for this reason, but also used within the ordinance for some other requirements. That's why 20% was thrown up there, but ultimately, the number is up to debate. But I will say that it can be done either through grocery seats or shelf space. The way we define 20% is still an open question.
So if you're, if you want to make sure that we equalize all businesses and we don't carve out any particular business, in my mind, 20% seems reasonable. If you tip over to 50%, 75%, then you're probably in the business of distributing those materials. Let's move on to the next one. You know, who cares about the word erotic? It is erotic, whatever. I mean, I don't care about that. The nudity part, yeah, I think that that has a place, a big part of it. So can we at least agree that that's a part of the modifications? Again, for clarity, do we just go home and make our own modification lists and give it to you? I mean, how do we go forward?
I think either through a vote or through direction here, if there's a polling. Either way is fine, and I think it would be appropriate. Making these changes, for example, the erotic, to be honest, as the prosecution side of my office, it would help our office to have better clarity in enforcement.
So you would prefer to keep the word erotic?
I prefer, just for my purposes, I'd prefer to remove it.
Oh, remove it? Okay. Well, that would have no problem. You know, personally, if we're taking a polling vote, I would like to see these stay in the industrial area, areas. I would like to see licensing because we do have sex offenders that also are attracted to this type of thing. I think they do, should have licensing. And remember, all businesses should have licensing. So I think that that's an equalization situation. I would have no problem obscuring some of these things. There are some things that I think if, you know, parents want to go in there and shop for a bottle of water, maybe it shouldn't be out in the open. You know, some people would think that's wrong, but I, personally, I think that's not a problem. Let me see, what was the other thing? The parental, isn't there a state's, state law that even with the parent, I mean, you can't take a six-year-old into a building and the parent comes along and he says, or she says to the property owner, the business owner, "I want my six-year-old to go into that booth and watch these pornography." I mean, could it happen? Sure. But do we try to prevent somebody with no judgment from bringing their children in there? I'm sort of in favor of that. I mean, I don't think it's right. And yeah, I know there's a certain, certain sect of people out there that think that's okay, but we have a lot of proof. People build their practices on situations like that. So again, do we go back to the drawing table and bring our own modifications forward from here?
That's up to council. I'd prefer some sort of voter direction or polling here because I'd like to hear from the council as a whole rather than individuals. It's hard to deal with kind of one-off changes, so I'd prefer polling. But, and I want to address two things on the licensing. Under the way it's currently drafted, any sexually-oriented business would have to license, the owner would have to license. And where employees are not required to license, which are part-time and employees of novelty stores, they would have to certify that their employees are not registered sex offenders. So there is that requirement. Now, regarding the parental, just to clarify your question, is there a state ordinance? Yes, there's a state ordinance, and it deals with prohibiting harmful material to minors, is the name of the ordinance. And it essentially is pornography, and that is prohibited for minors. Now, this ordinance goes a little bit beyond pornography. When we deal about nudity, nudity doesn't necessarily qualify as pornography. So it is a little bit broader, and that's why the question is raised, whether we want to allow parental consent or not. And quite frankly, I have no recommendations either way on that.
So for today, do we go ahead and make, I mean, should I make a motion that we move to approve with modifications? Okay, no, I know. Okay, I'm sorry. I just-
No, I think we're not really making a motion on this. You're going to make your recommendations to our city attorney about what issues you'd like to modify, eliminate, keep, et cetera, so that he can work on a, another draft that's going to be closer to being acceptable as being a voted-in ordinance.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I still have some questions before we start making motions, so I would appreciate the opportunity to ask those questions. One of the things you mentioned, Joe, is the businesses have to certify that their employees are not sex offenders. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, again, I guess my question would be, there, the means for them to do that, to be able to comfortably, as a business owner, to comfortably certify that presumably would be a background check.
Well, the, no.
Okay.
There's a necessary requirement. We have a sex offender registration where people can be looked up. So it'd just be, go online, look it up.
Okay, so they don't have to do a background check. Okay. But they do have to pay a licensing fee for registering?
For themselves, just as owners.
But not the employees?
Depends on the business. So for adult novelty stores, not, they don't have to pay for the employees. Under the way it's currently drafted, and this can go either direction as council seats fit, but no, for adult novelty stores, there's no requirement for employees to be licensed, and for part-time employees, there's no requirement.
Okay. What are the requirements where they would have to pay for the licensing for employees?
Full-time employees or-
At adult, not at adult novelty stores or?
Full-time employees at any business other than adult novelty stores.
Okay, so the traveling, I guess I'm imagining, if we had someone who put together a traveling cabaret show that, you know, met that definition of what we would think of as sexually-oriented business in this, would the person who is running sound have to pay? Would they have to pay to license that person?
As it's drafted, if they're a full-time employee, then yes.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess part of my angst with this proposal is I think we've lumped it together into sexually-oriented businesses, maybe businesses that provide goods and businesses that provide services. And I think that's a concern for me. I mean, it's not uncommon in large cities such as Phoenix. You go down I-17, and you can see billboards and signs for stores like Fascinations or, there's one that's called Essentials for Lovers or something like that. You see, you see the signs, okay, and they're, they're retail stores. And I'm a retail store, for example. They're not providing massages, they're not providing arcades, they're not providing cabaret shows. It's just a retail store. And so I guess a concern I have is lumping retail stores and making it more onerous on them, like licensing and burdensome. I own a small business. I don't have to pay a $500 fee, you know, licensing fee. So I think we need to look at how we're being unequal in what we're levying on a small business because of the nature of their business. And so I just have a problem with several elements of this ordinance.
And I will say that these, this was all in the ordinance before we got to this point, so we can change that. But it's not, and none of that is new in terms of having stores and places for services under the same ordinance. And I'll say that in Phoenix, it's the same way. And so you'll see Essentials for Lovers or whatever go through this licensing process in Phoenix. So that part is not necessarily abnormal, but certainly it's a consideration as, and as you move forward and decide which direction we're going to go, that can be a determination you make.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would, I would tend to agree with what Eric's saying, that I think, one of the problems I have in reading this ordinance, it's trying to do too much all at once. It combines a lot. And I know that that's, I understand that historically that's how this ordinance was poorly written years ago, and it continues to be poorly written in that way. I guess the other thing I would, that I appreciated that Eric said was, you know, I, as, who I imagine being the only parent of a minor child that's on this council up here, and I happen to be the parent of two minor children, I don't really particularly want the city of Prescott to get in the business of raising my kids. I want to do it myself. And, and I imagine most parents feel that way. And so I think we have to be careful about regulating how people raise their children a little bit. That's, that's a huge concern I have. Now, do I think that, you know, if a parent is committing abuse against a child, which, you know, certainly could go in the way of, you know, exposing them to sexually-oriented businesses potentially, there's, there's that reality. But I think at the end of the day, we already have laws in effect that deal with those issues. So I don't know that wading into over-regulating things is what we need to do. And I think if I had my druthers about this, I would break this up into very specific things. I would have one that deals with, you know, massage parlors specifically. I would have a separate ordinance that dealt with, you know, the novelty stores specifically, and one that's dealt with traveling shows. Because I think it gives the city more flexibility. If, if we move forward and we say, okay, we've, we've dealt with the adult novelty store issue, and we've established parameters, and maybe we think that 20% isn't that big of a deal, and then come to find out that we're having a disproportionate economic impact on a small business owner in this community, we could get that feedback and modify without having to go through this whole process again, which is, I think, part of the problem here, is that we're trying to do too many things at once. So that, that's my opinion, and I don't know how to put that into a motion or a vote, and I don't expect the city, you know, I don't want to go home with homework because I don't think I'm going to get out of here until 6:00. So I would suggest that maybe there's a way to break it up into pieces.
All right. I think we can take some public comment at this point and maybe get some input on things that we are considering, we haven't considered, just so that we have a broader understanding of what the community is interested in, in this area.
All right. First comment card is from Jay-
And before we do that, the Phillies just tied it up. It's 1 to 1.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and address what I think is a critical issue.
Please speak into the microphone, sir.
Speak into the mic. I usually just boom my voice. I expect two things from elected officials in our country. One, protect the agreement that keeps our union together, the Constitution. Two, guard the common good, starting with our tax dollars. I'm here to address the pending resolution, City Code Chapter 5 through 7, which has just been discussed. As the producer and founder of the Free All Ages Performance Festival that brought tens of thousands of people to the Prescott Courthouse Plaza over 15 years, I look at this resolution, and I could see our family-friendly festival, Tsunami on the Square, having been in breach of this ordinance. When John Tenus, eventual executive director of Smoke Eye Museum and Coconino Center for the Arts, wore a grass skirt and coconut breasts to sing with the ukulele at the first Tsunami on the Square, was he in breach because the coconuts were occupying specific anatomical areas? When world-renowned Japanese bute dancers Koichi and Hiroko Tomano performed in kimonos on the Courthouse Plaza, satirizing female expressions emphasizing their hips and pelvis, could that have been considered specified sexual activity? When young male Afro-Brazilian capoeira dancers performed shirtless in tight shorts, were they performing in a semi-nude condition? Would the observable surge of teenage girls before their performance be construed as specified sexual activity? When the mayor of Clarkdale's wife belly-danced, articulating her hips in rhythmic undulation in front of a clapping public, was she emphasizing specific sexual activity? Who here can legitimately answer these questions? Or what is lacking in artistic, literary, political, or educational value? The answer is, no one can. They are subjective to taste, and there is no reasonable or current standard for taste. We lose the character of our country when ordinances like this legitimize government overreach. Legislating morality through legal code is what the communist regimes of Eastern Europe did. Prescott City Council should be better than Stalin's minions. This ordinance will also fail because it's in violation of the First Amendment. And when it fails, Prescott could get sued and lose money. As a taxpayer, I will resent our community's financial loss because our city council approved legislating morality and taste. Dear city council and mayor, please do the right thing. Stop government overreach and protect the First Amendment and our tax dollars. Do not waste any more time or money on this ordinance. Thank you.
Candace Devine Sheridan?
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protam. My name is Candace Devine Sheridan. I stand before you first and foremost, the mother of the coolest eight-year-old you'll ever meet. I am also a wife and a business owner in town. I am co-owner of Sheridan Property Group, and I am the president and owner of Further West, which is a live event production company, female-led. More than half my team are mothers that live in this city, having children from the ranges of four to 18. I'm going to start with, I put on about eight to 10 events a year in town, but I'm going to start with the largest event just to kind of personify the overreach of this ordinance. I put on the Pure Imagination Music Festival at Watson Lake. Under this ordinance, the national treasure, Dolly Parton, would get me in trouble because her costuming has specifically done things that show underboob, side boob, potentially buttocks. When you put something like this through, to your point, Mr. Montoya, it's so broad, you're now asking me as a business owner to police artists that I don't even know what they're going to be wearing until they go on stage. Our event, our festival, is family-friendly. I leave it to the parents to decide if they believe a music festival is an appropriate place to bring a child. I can tell you, past the last two years, more parents than not have said, "What an incredible event. How lovely that we've brought so much culture and music and diversity of sound into our beautiful landscapes," and that my child gets to witness it. You're putting me in a position to not be able to do that for my business. You are squashing my business liberty, the First Amendment rights of my performers, and putting me in a position that also affects our economy as a whole. I employ hundreds of people for this event. That is inclusive of and not limited to the PUSD buses and the bus drivers, the off-duty police officers, all of our local food trucks, our AZ Rangers, our local musicians, our local artists, our local performance artists, our local bartenders, our local vendors. I also get a ton of aid and sponsorship and partnership with 25 to 50 other businesses in town who support my festival because of the direct correlation to advertising for their businesses. And I hire setup crews, cleanup crews, parking crews, ticketing crews. I hire the kayaking vendors. And I also hire our indigenous brothers and sisters to come speak to our festival, bless our indigenous lands, and remind everybody to keep our area as clean, excuse me, as clean as possible. This ordinance envelops all of it. And so you're looking at something that is a wonderful experience for our community, which I had 4,000-plus people the first year of our community, 6,000 people last year. We're growing. I can't wait to share who's on our festival lineup for 2024. But under this ordinance, one, I don't know how it's going to be enforced, and two, am I to be frightened that I'll be hauled off in handcuffs if one of my performers shows up in a crop top with underboob? How are you going to enforce this? How are you going to decide what's appropriate and not appropriate in the culmination of something so artful being put on its feet? So I stand with Jay Ruby on that front. The First Amendment here is in great question, for sure. You're squashing business liberty, and I think it needs to be divided into very specific lanes and take a lot more time on this because you are inevitably affecting the economy as a whole with something this broad. Thank you.
I'm going to ask you again not to demonstrate and make clapping or booing sounds or anything else, otherwise we'll eliminate future comments from the public. So I ask you for decorum, and let's allow everyone to make their statements without comment. comment.
Judy Stahl.
Hello, Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council members. My name is Judy Stahl. I've been a practicing massage therapist in Prescott since 1992. And I want you to know that the Arizona State Board of Massage Therapy is the body that regulates the practice of massage therapy in Arizona, and requires, at this point in time, background checks that will protect the public when licensed massage therapists are practicing within our city limits. I really appreciate what City Attorney Young brought up today about the concerns, first of all, with those issues. If we put into whatever ordinance you may determine to put forward regarding massage therapy, if you simply put in that someone who is licensed in good standing with the Arizona State Board of Massage Therapy, that that's what is a massage therapist within the city of Prescott, then you are protecting the citizens completely. If there's someone who is practicing something, and they are claiming that it is massage, legally, they are not allowed to do that, because they are required to be licensed to use that terminology whatsoever in the state of Arizona. And if someone is claiming that they're doing massage, the city can, of course, if there's a complaint, that there's something going on that's nefarious, the city can look into it. I would imagine that the city can go in and check and see whether or not those people have a license to practice. But to put in massage parlor after the decades that we have spent attempting to make clear that massage therapy is not sex. In fact, massage therapy is medicine. Massage therapy is now a practice through the Veterans Administration that is offered with a definition of massage therapy and all of the research and data showing how it is medicine that is offered to the Veterans Administration clientele throughout the country. This is the largest healthcare system in the country, and massage therapy is a provided therapy. So it is not massage parlors. It is actual medicine. And so the fact that we've got a state licensure law that covers the practice of massage therapy, and the fact that it is now absolutely demonstrated to be medicine, you know, the research is undeniable. It is massive, and it has been coming about for many years. I really do not want to see the word "massage" used in any way related to sexually oriented businesses. You know, someone even mentioned earlier, "Well, if we're talking about massage parlors." It's such a loosely-used phrase at this point. And of course, it goes right up the spine of someone who's been providing this medicine that finally is recognized as medicine and is provided to clientele, helping with things such as cancer pain, post-operative pain, PTSD therapy, anxiety, depression, and on and on. So I cannot give up the practice of my profession to something that is described as sex and sexually-oriented businesses, because that also makes it very difficult for we who are licensed massage therapists to practice, without perhaps having someone contact us and say, "Yeah, I want to come in and get a massage." And then they come in, and they want something other than professional massage therapy.
Please conclude your remarks, please.
I'm sorry?
Please conclude your remarks.
Okay. So the bottom line for me is, please don't, please don't do this without making sure that you are really clear on what the results are going to be of what you're doing. I appreciate what a lot of folks have said here today regarding the city regulating what's going on in people's lives in ways that it doesn't seem like there's really much of a problem that couldn't be handled through just, you know, using the police and going to the State Board of Massage Therapy. Thank you.
Patty Michelle Schaefer.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council members and staff. My name's Patty Michelle Schaefer, and I recently retired here a handful of years ago, and from the Air Force Space Missile Systems Center in Los Angeles, where I was a research scientist for 37 years. Now it's called Space Command. That was a fairly recent change. Working on hypersonic nuclear weapons at the secret level, and missile defense, but also climate breakdown, and chemical physics.
Can you make your comments relative to this issue, please?
Yes, I'm going to do that right now. So the first 17 years of working at the Air Force Space Command, my name was Patrick. The next 19 years, my name was Patricia. So they helped me repair a birth defect that was very important in my life, and I was able to continue my research. At that time, I became aware of my fantastic and unfelt, because it's asymptomatic, ignorance of the LGBT community, because I had no idea. I mean, we can all agree pretty clearly about certain things, but it strikes me that this sort of thing might be infringing on their rights of that community, who struggles a lot. And you can imagine, while I was going through this transition from Patrick to Patricia, your laws might have impacted me if I'd have driven through this town. So there may be some ignorance, because, and I know what you feel like, I was completely ignorant of that community till I was in my 40s. And then I met these people and realized they have their own concerns, and they're just other citizens like us. And they're not going out making sex parlors, or massage, or anything like that. But yet, they're impacted by laws like this that don't define things well. For instance, during that transition, did I look erotic? I don't know. Do I look erotic now? Do my classmates at Yavapai College look erotic? So it may be a bad law, and it might be important to consider this aspect of your constituency, who you may not have any friends who are LGBT. You may not have family members who are LGBT. But we have specialists in this town. Many of the churches actually have outreach programs to these people, and can provide you with information on what's going on in their communities. Thank you very much.
Sheri Hannah. She's still here. Kathleen Sauer. Hopefully I said that right.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members, and city staff. I'd like to focus on the additions, the current additions, not the ones on the screen, to Chapter 5-7, that are in violation of the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, and that they target a protected class and are unconstitutionally vague. The revision adds three important definitions to the existing code. Adult entertainment is defined as any exhibition, dance, pantomime modeling, or other performance predominantly distinguished or characterized by emphasis, or depiction, or description of any erotic nature, including, but not limited to, performers in a state of nudity, performers in a semi-nude condition, or depiction or descriptions of specified sexual activities or specified anatomical areas. Erotic is defined as devoted to or intending to arouse or excite purient sexual desires or curiosities. Specified sexual activities includes many things, but it's been expanded specifically to include the purposeful exposure, whether complete or partial, of prosthetic genitalia or breasts. It really appears that these definitions were added to specifically target all drag shows. Despite numerous recent examples of courts refusing to uphold bans on drag shows, it appears that this language has been added to back into the definition of obscene speech as defined by the U.S. Supreme Court in the case of Miller versus California, 1973. In that case, the court defines speech deserving of no First Amendment protections with the following test, as been mentioned before. First, the average person, applying community standards, must find the work as a whole appears to the purient interest. Second, the work must show in a patently offensive way sexual conduct specifically defined by the law. And third, the work as taken as a whole must lack serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. Applying community standards, you must admit that drag shows have been performed and enjoyed in this community and throughout the state of Arizona for years. Why the sudden interest in banning or curtailing them now? Even if one segment of our society has decided that now is the right time to demonize drag and the LGBTQ community, this does not allow the constitutional overreach of this revision. This revision tries to meet the second prong of the Miller case by the addition of complete or partial exposure of prosthetic genitalia or breasts to the definition of specified sexual activities. However, this definition is fatally vague. Consider a musical performance by a survivor of breast cancer, post-reconstruction surgery, in a dress with a plunging neckline. Would this performance fall under this definition? Finally, the last prong, that the work taken as a whole must lack serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value, this was left out of the definition of erotic entirely, even though it appears elsewhere in the revised code, such as in the definition of adult theater. Why? Clearly, drag shows are artistic. However, I would also like to emphasize that drag is not inherently sexual or purient. By leaving out this third prong, this revision has been rendered unconstitutionally vague. I want you to consider some other forms of entertainment that could plausibly fall under the revised definition of adult entertainment. A production of plays by Shakespeare, particularly those in which the male actors, like in the day of Shakespeare, assumed the female roles. Plays by Tennessee Williams, or any number of noteworthy playwrights. An exhibition of artistic works depicting nudity, such as Michelangelo's David. A film festival with R-rated movies. If these forms of entertainment are not adult entertainment as defined by this revision, then neither is drag. If this revision is enacted, it will be seen as targeting the LGBTQ community, and will create equal protection and protected-class issues. I'm pointing out the flaws in this ordinance. It's not as a blueprint for you to go back to the drawing board and try to fix it. I'm doing this to point out that if your target is all drag...
Please conclude your remarks.
You cannot fix this.
Please conclude your remarks.
You cannot add a definition here, or tweak the language there, in a way that will allow you to ban or chill drag shows under the First and 14th Amendments of the U.S. Constitution. I urge you to abandon this effort and embrace all of your citizens with respect, understanding, and acceptance. Thank you.
Peggy Glenn.
And I will make a statement that we recognize that LGBTQ is a protected class under federal law, and we also will mention the fact that there's been no specific reference to drag shows here. We're trying to make sure that the public health and safety are protected, and we do have consideration about minors. That's what we're working on. So let's be clear on that, because a lot of people have extrapolated the discussion here far beyond what we're discussing and what we intend to do. So we will make sure that we follow the law, and we follow judicial decision-making and federal statutes when it comes to protected classes.
Hi, me again, Peggy Glenn. Mayor Good, Mayor Protem, Montoya, Clark Tenney, Eric Moore, Kathy Rusing, Steve Sisker, and Connie Cantelme, thank you for having me here again. Mr. Young, you can't put lipstick on a pig and call it anything other than a pig. Apparently, the prude squad got all upset about some of the things going on in our town. Oh my God, there's traveling drag shows, there's traveling vaudeville shows, oh, there's a burlesque this, there's a something else that. We better prepare for the apocalypse of over-sexualization. And if you've got a really old law that's not doing the job, you don't try to put lipstick on it and make it a good law or good ordinance. You start from the scratch. You know, if I'm making a cake, and all of a sudden the flour's got weevils in it, I don't continue to make the cake. I toss it out, and I go buy a new bag of flour, and I make a better cake. If I'm trying to make a dress, and the fabric I'm using has got a big hole in it, I don't continue. I go buy a new piece of fabric and make a new dress. You, Connie, I think, and Kathy asked, "Well, what do we do? How do we approve this?" You have three choices: move to approve as drafted, move to deny. That would be fabulous. It's not ready for primetime. Yes, I'm an actor. Yes, I'm a performer. Yes, I'm a public speaker. Yes, I'm a little louder than others. But I am a pragmatist as well. If you've got a really cruddy law, you don't try and amp that law to make it do something that it's not designed to do. You have the option to move to deny. Secondarily to that, I would challenge each one, I would challenge city staff, actually, to find a setting so that anybody with a hearing loss could sit in the chair down here and see, because when we're sitting in the chair, and you guys are talking in your mics, "Mr. Good, I am paying attention," I'm hoping, we can't see your mouth, so we can't read your lips. And if you're not close to the mic, we can't hear you. I would challenge you to find, get a good sound tech, and get some sound system in this room, so that people can actually participate in these meetings and hear what you have to say. Because I don't think you're sitting up there with nothing important to say. You don't have this job to be unimportant. You have this job to do the best you can for the citizens of Prescott. I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening to me. You have the option to move to deny.
Maria Linum.
Thank you so much for letting me stand up. My name is Maria Linum, and I want to thank all of you for being here today. This has been a very long session. I was listening, I'm not going to read my prepared notes, listening to your comments, listening to Peggy, and you've gone beyond the wording of what is in this 25-page proposed ordinance. My suggestion is that you deny it, and you start from scratch. There are state laws that must encompass most of what is in here. I don't know what exactly you're trying to get here. I'm concerned that you are going to turn into, not you per se, but you're going to have a department in this city that's going to turn into the morality police. How in God's name do you define something that's lacking in artistic, literary, political, or educational value? We can't do that. We can do it in person, and encourage others to either go or not go. You're taking away our personal right and responsibility as citizens. I have, this is a 15-year-old law, and I have no idea of who has been charged under this law, or any of the aspects of it. So basically, I'm just suggesting that you deny this motion, or whatever it is, and go on, and let's start from you, and other responsible members of the community, start from scratch, and look at it as Brandon, excuse me, Councilman Montoya suggested, from, let's potentially split it up, and give the citizen the decision, not you. So I thank you, and I also echo, unfortunately, Peggy's comment about the mic system. It is not very good. Mayor Good, I've talked to you before about this. I can sometimes barely hear you, especially when you give us a paragraph, which I enjoy and would like to hear. You know, it disintegrates, and we can't grab it. So I hope the people at home can. So thank you very much.
Rosemary Dixon.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I just want to say that I believe that parents can and should make the choice of what entertainment their children see. I think it's way beyond the purview of City Council to be deciding what a minor can see and they can't see, if they have parents. So for me, it's sort of a nanny state kind of thing. And I'm a mother. My daughter, we had to make all kinds of choices about what she saw, and we made those choices, and she's just fine. Thank you. So I would like you all to reconsider this very carefully. We all want to protect our children, but it's not the city's job to protect the children from entertainment. Thank you.
Jeffrey Daverman.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the time.
Please speak into the microphone.
Is that better? And I appreciate you guys listening to my emails that I’ve been sending and some of the customers that I’ve been having email you guys as well. So we’re going to get away from the entertainment and go to the retail stores. That’s been a big topic of conversation here. So I own Oh Babe, which is a lingerie store. We have lingerie, club wear, body jewelry, and then we also have adult wellness products. I’d say that’s probably about 20% of my business, but then again, I’d have to have you guys come in and tell me which products are actually adult, because there’s so many different products there. The type of people that come into my business—well, basically, look around. These are my customers. I have professionals, business owners, doctors, lawyers, teachers, professors, council members, and these fine people that come into my shop. Keep looking around. I run a clean, legitimate business, and every day I’m thanked for having this door open because people have a safe place to come and shop for their wellness goods, things that benefit them, their marriage and relationships. Also, doctors are sending their patients to me because I carry products that help with couples to have an intimate life again. People are saying thank you because they don’t have to go to Phoenix anymore to go into those shops they don’t care to, that they don’t feel safe in. So I did have something prepared, but I agree with so many people back here that we don’t want the government in our bedroom. And I really do appreciate that there is modifications on here. Some of that stuff I can live with. The old one—I had a whole list of things that would really make it difficult to be in business and the other retailers as well in town. So I do appreciate that you guys are, you know, wanting to modify it, but I think it has a lot more work left to do, and it would be nice to have some input or talk to us about some of these issues, like you guys are doing. So I thank you for that. I’m going to keep it short and sweet. Appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Edward Passerlich?
I’ve got all sorts of pages written that I was going to talk about, but at this time of night, I don’t want to talk about them. We don’t have that kind of—we don’t have that kind of time. But I would like to read a letter that—or, excuse me—it’s an article that was in the Quad Cities Business News in July that Mayor Good wrote. He said, “His goal is to make sure that the ordinances of the city of Prescott meet the needs of our cities in these modern times. A few of these are related to adult entertainment or sexually oriented businesses and the hosting of sexually oriented shows such as cabaret or drag shows.” And I’m afraid—I just don’t think we need to do that. I don’t think we need ordinances like this. There’s another post that was on the web. “The Puritans are at it again in Prescott. I’ve been to many drag shows here and never once have I seen nudity, at least not any more than the cleavage I’ve seen some Republican women showing. It’s entertainment, people just like the Prince or Taylor Swift or Prescott Arts Center. Moreover, it celebrates gay culture, and I think this is overt homophobia. I expect a severe ordinance to pass and then the city to be hit with a freedom of speech lawsuit.” This is from a post on the Democratic Women’s website—or, excuse me, Facebook page. So I’m not going to say anymore, except that I think there’s a long ways to go. The references regarding what was used as a basis for this document are old and out of date. Please, update them. Get references from psychiatrists, medical professionals, your police officers. Find out what’s going on in Prescott. I really think it’s important to really understand this community, and this motion as it is written does not understand this community. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name’s Whitney Williams, and I’m vice president of House of Hues, a local queer arts nonprofit in town, and a drag performer, a public school teacher, and I’ve been born and raised—born in the Yavapai Regional Medical Center, actually, before the birthing center was moved to PV. A captain for CAFMA did a striptease down to his chest at the Big Brothers Big Sisters Dancing With The Stars fundraiser. I know of several families that attended, and not one thought it was inappropriate for their children. Would this ordinance be enforced for him? So given that example, these changes to the ordinance will disproportionately affect women, queer performers, and local businesses. It is a violation of our freedom of speech. You cannot tell me that if a drag queen, fully clothed, performed at that fundraiser, our council would not have worked to enforce this ordinance and made her get licensed, background-checked, and told she can only perform in industrial areas. I should not have to apply for a license every time I perform drag in this town with House of Hues. The adult-oriented businesses, our drag shows, and the burlesque shows in this community don’t hurt children. In fact, our drag shows have protected children, providing a safe place for them. We had a family-friendly Pride Festival back in June, and that was highly successful. We allowed children into our drag shows only if they were attended with a guardian. It is so important to cultivate safe spaces for queer community, it truly is suicide prevention. This ordinance is taking away parents’ rights to choose what is best for their child, and that would end up being an abuse of your power. Drag is not inherently sexual, just like dancing isn’t. Dancing ranges from ballet to strip shows, just like drag ranges from kid shows with storytime to raunchy late-night performances. Video games, R-rated movies, all of those things parents get to decide for their children to participate in. Drag should be no different. It is a suppression tactic to isolate our shows to industrial areas. House of Hues will not have venues to perform at if you zone us this way. It would be separate and unequal. The theaters that we perform at are in areas zoned to different codes. You will have created a physical barrier that will prevent our shows from occurring. I wish the council would focus their energies on actual sex abuse happening to our children in our community. Why isn’t the council outraged at these proven instances of abuse of children and women in our community? Instead, I’m watching you buying into this fabricated message that all queer people potentially could be pedophiles, when the real pedophiles are out there. Those three child abusers convicted a month ago? Hojat Askari arrested for sex trafficking? David Stringer, who was on the school board? And many more. As Officer Cassoon was quoted in The Courier, “And the prevalence of child sex exploitation in the Quad City area is unfortunately very prevalent. It would be a better use of the council’s time to make sure our children are safe from the real abusers out there. Our organization is one of the many organizations in this town that will be disproportionately affected by this ordinance. We’ve had representation speaking at city council meetings multiple times, and multiple members of ours have emailed you asking to be part of the discussion.”
Please conclude your remarks.
I voted for you, and I told my communities to vote for you. If you end up voting to pass these changes, I will not make the same mistake again. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I clarify that Mr. Stringer was never on the school board, although we did elect him to the state legislature?
That’s correct.
Patty Christina Willis.
And I would ask if—unless you can add some additional information that we haven’t yet heard, restating the same concerns is not being very productive here.
My name is—
Can’t hear you, sir. Please speak up, please.
I would state that unless you can add some new information, that restating the same concerns are not effective for this public comment period. Is that sufficient for you?
Excellent.
And I will tell you that I’ve had half of my vocal cords removed because I have a respiratory tumor—that I acquired by serving with the United States Army in Vietnam and being exposed to Agent Orange. So it’s a disability, and I’m sure that a lot of you people who are concerned about protected classes should also be concerned about someone who has a disability that they received from serving his country.
We are, and that is why we recommend that you get the necessary equipment that you—
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Good, Mayor Protem, and council members. I am so impressed by the common sense I have been hearing through this meeting. I am the pastor—I’m Patty Willis. I’m the pastor of Granite Peak Unitarian Universalist Congregation, and often with my congregation, I talk with them about intent and impact, and I believe that often the intent to—in this case, to protect children that came out—in the words that you wrote, Mayor Good—the impact was, in the LGBTQ community, has been fear. And Rabbi Shoneman, in her invocation—I imagine that you heard—what is happening in synagogues, that there have been bomb threats in Flagstaff, and that many of the synagogues around the country are experiencing fear. There’s a lot of fear. So the larger picture that I see as a pastor is that targeting certain things—and I was looking at the performances because of your article, Mayor Good, and I wrote you a letter that was signed by 46 people. I think you—I don’t know if you remember receiving it, but the name that comes out to me is Briggy Dickinson signed this letter. Briggy Dickinson is the cousin of Anne Frank. Because the people who experienced what happened in Nazi Germany are trying to see the big picture whenever they do. Are there groups that are feeling fear? Are there groups that are targeted? We don’t need to like everyone, but we need to protect everyone’s rights. And I thank you—I thank you, Mayor Good, for your service. I had an uncle who was a pilot and who also experienced many things, died recently of COPD from that time. So I thank you for your service and all of you for being here and for being so articulate through the whole thing. Thank you.
That’s all, Mayor.
How do you want us to proceed at this point? I think there are so many different aspects that I think almost everyone on this council has various concerns about amending. To try to discuss it at this point, I think, would be unproductive, and I think maybe we could individually send you some recommendations and see if you could incorporate that in our next draft version.
I think at this point, that makes sense, and we can come back with some of those changes made, and we’ll talk about that. And last, one of the recommendations is breaking things down into individual section, which would be a big project, but one that I think would make some sense. But if we’re going that direction, I’d like to know that now. Otherwise, we can—just send me input, and we can make those changes.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. You know, when I was going back to the agenda, everything else is talking about passing, you know, this or that, and this one just says, “Request for feedback on ordinance number 2023-1843.” And I think that between the council and the folks out here, we got feedback. I’m not sure what else you’d like from us.
I think the feedback’s important as the council as a whole. I think that we have several different opinions of what it should look like, and—from the council and a lot more in the audience. And to be honest, you seven are the ones I need to hear from. So the feedback that I’ve heard verbally is good, but to the extent that there is either vote, polling, or sending me information afterwards, just helps know what the council thinks.
Okay, so—excuse me, Mayor. So we don’t necessarily have to make a motion to vote on something?
No.
Okay.
And as I mentioned at the beginning, nothing we could do here would enact this or approve it as a law. We still have steps to go through.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I am sorry to say this, but I’m a fan of breaking into pieces. I think it’s an unwieldy project, I’m sure, for your office, and I—you knew what you were getting into when you became an attorney, I assume. But I think the only way this process is going to move forward with a way to achieve what we’re trying to achieve here is to separate out these things. Because if we’re trying to bite off too much, it’s just—it’s going to be—I can hear feedback—even the feedback we heard from the public today. We heard feedback on four different components of this. And so I think breaking it into four different pieces—well, I don’t know if it’s four, but whatever number that makes sense as it relates to the provisions of this just gives us more ability to, A, try and get it a little bit more precise and appropriate to what the community is responding with, and B, it also allows us that if we do venture down the path of unintended consequences, that we have an easier remedy to fix this problem going forward. And that’s the big part of it for me. I don’t—I think there—and I want to be clear, there are parts of this that are necessary to update and modify, but I do think that breaking it into pieces makes sense, and that’s my feedback. I can send you an email to that effect, too.
Noted. For those of you who are interested, the Phillies scored on the bottom of the fourth, so they’re ahead two to one. Councilwoman Cantelme?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just for the record, we have all been receiving your emails, and I counted—I have 109 emails in support. So we can’t discount the fact that we do have people that obviously couldn’t be here today that do support this ordinance, and we have to remember that. But we also have to remember the reason for an ordinance in the beginning. What is the intent of these ordinances? And there are many. I mean, look in the city ordinance book. There’s hundreds of ordinances. This is really to give our attorney the tools in order to prosecute the bad offenders. And, Joe, I’d like to hear from you. If you have to use this ordinance and exercise your legal ability to, you know, be able to prosecute somebody that has—again, as always, there’s always an abuser that’s going to ruin it for everybody. But in your opinion, if you had to go after somebody for an abuse of something, would this ordinance help you? Because I know in my own past, you can’t have too little information. You have to have more tools when you go in front of a court, or, you know, you’re being prosecuted, or you are the prosecutor. So what is your legal opinion on this ordinance? Do we have too much abusive verbiage in this ordinance? Is it better to have more or less? I’d like to have your opinion on that.
I’m going to answer the question I think you asked.
Well, if you have an ordinance and you need to exercise the rights that are stated, clearly stated, in an ordinance, do you think that this ordinance is too cumbersome?
I think that simple ordinances are easier to enforce, and it was suggested to break it up. To be honest, that would be a lot of work, but one that I would be happy to do because it does make it easier when we have more direct—a 25-page ordinance is pretty long. And so breaking it up would be something that would be a project that I’d be willing to do, would help us with enforcement.
I think that that’s pertinent information, and we need to remember that. And then I also want to address the woman who was the massage therapist. I think everybody in this room understands the value of a massage. Again, nobody’s going after people that are legitimate. This ordinance is basically going to be used if people are abusing. These are the abusers, and we have to have the tools to be able to shut those places down. But, I mean, I couldn’t live without the massages, the chiropractic. I think many of us feel the same way. This is not—we’re not going after people that have legitimate businesses, in no way. That is not the intent. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore?
I just want to say that I’m in favor of breaking it up as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tenney?
Thank you. Same feedback in terms of putting it in smaller chunks that we can—are more easily digestible for all of us. And I really appreciate the points of view that were brought up today. It’s a strong contrast to, as Councilwoman Cantelme mentioned, dozens of points of view that we’ve heard from other folks in the community. So I think it’s important for all of us to— So I think it's important for all of us to recognize, if you showed up and just heard what was said here tonight, it would be easy to walk away thinking, everybody in the community thinks like this, because that, we heard kind of one direction of voices, but we've heard another direction of voices from a lot of other people. So I really appreciate having heard from, from all different facets of the community. I'm really glad that we're gonna be doing more work on this and going to the public further with this before we move forward at all. It's certainly not ready to be baked, I think, as somebody said earlier.
Well, Councilman Tenny and the other councilman here that brought this up, I think we're on the right track here. I think casting too wide of a net and trying to cover all these different components or aspects of this area is just too, too difficult, and it would probably generate some unintended consequences that we'd have to come back and look at the whole ordinance again. So I agree with Mayor Protam, this might put a little burden on your office there, but I think breaking adult entertainment into one section, and then services and products into another section, and then massage therapy as a third area to be monitored is probably a better way of handling it. And that way, if we do find unintended consequences in one or more of these areas, then we all, all we have to do is look at those and correct them.
Thank you. And I think that gives me enough to start a pretty big project, and would look for more input as, via email.
And I want to add, when I talked to Attorney Young a number of months ago, when, of course, we started on the charter review amendments as one project, but one of the things that came to my awareness is that we had so many ordinances that had been passed over the years that had never been looked at again, and were really out of date, and not enforceable and not defensible when they came to trying to enforce them and then trying to defend those enforcement actions in a judicial environment, whether it's our city attorney, or our city court, or other places, it was just way overdue for a review in these areas. So it's not like we're picking, picking out any particular area. We just realized that it was about time for us to take a good look at what our ordinances are, and whether they're still legitimate, and whether they are appropriate, and like I said before, enforceable and defensible. So I think you have your guidance.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
And Little Bird just told me that the Diamondbacks tied it up two to, two to two. So I think we can move on to the next item.
Hey, Don Lee, there's some great stuff about pavement microsealing coming up. You don't want to miss that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just to kind of help move things along here. Our next item is the presentation and the closing of the public hearing and comment period for the CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Report. And I have Mike McGinnis here to provide us a quick overview.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Michael McGinnis, I am with the Community Development Team. I'm your CDBG coordinator here with the city. I'm gonna make this as short as possible, okay? So this is, this whole Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also called the CAPER, basically, it's our end-up program year report for program year 2022. That went from, let's say, July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023. So it just closed, and a lot of success with that program that I'm gonna share real quick right now. This is the end of a 15-day public comment period that started October 9th, and there was no public comment. Okay. CAPER highlights, last time I was here, I shared about our minor home repair program. At the end of the program year, we helped out eight residents benefited from the repairs through the CDBG program. A lot of this was done by the Chamber of Commerce Foundation and their executive director, Ms. Sherry Heine, so a shout out to her and all her hard work for that. Other parts of our program, we helped over 2,000 Prescott residents receive basic need services through transportation, People Who Care, New Horizon were the providers, a senior mentoring program through Palera Health, and rental assistance program through Matforce, Arizona Serves, which is run by Prescott College in conjunction with AmeriCorps, aided seven young adults with workforce development. The big project for the year was the Community Nature Center ADA Trail, which was completed. I got pictures, you know, when I got here, this project was already kind of going. So the people that were really pushing this project forward, I want to recognize, Ellen Basher, who I think everybody knows, Joe Baines with Parks and Rec, and the contractor that we used was Autumn Blaze Construction, did a fantastic job. If you have a chance to go check it out, please do. Projects that are on the way, the Officer Quarters Project, we're looking at 2024, I believe that's gonna be 24 units for homeless vets. Pictures, this was back in August, for the ribbon cutting ceremony, you have Ellen Basher there. We had some great presentations to open up the trail, and as you can see, the trail right behind the young lady goes about 1,500 feet, and there's the actual ribbon cutting. Again, if you have a chance to check it out, it's, it's over by Granite Middle School, right across from their drop-off parking lot. Highly encourage it. They did a real, real great job, so. With that, that's it, that's all I got. If there's questions, I'm here.
Councilman Tenny?
I didn't press my request to speak button, but as the council liaison to CDBG, I've seen a lot of this great work in action, and I just want to commend you, Michael, for the great work that you've done, and thanks for the good presentation tonight about the positive ways that this has impacted our community.
Thank you. It is a public hearing that opened with the...
Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comment.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll make a move, I'll move to, I'll make a motion to move to close the public hearing on the 2022 CDBCG Consolidated Annual Performance Report. Man, it's been a long day.
I'll make a motion to move to second that motion that was moved.
Thank you both. Hearing, no other comments, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item 10C.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The next item is a site plan review for a 223-unit residential rental complex located in Deepwell Ranch. It is a rental community that was passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission with some stipulations, and I've got George Worley here, who is gonna talk about this item.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go through this pretty fast as well. We'll try and keep it to a half an hour if I can. Sorry. Real quick, you are somewhat familiar with this. I think some of these projects have been, talked to you previously, we have talked to you previously, wow, it is a long day. This one is a rental community. It is located at Piner Parkway and Willow Creek Road, the northwest corner. The purpose of the community is to provide rental housing. There are 223 units. It's within Deepwell Ranch Master Plan, the gold-colored area. The area is located in an Impact Zone 6, which is one of the areas that allows for residential uses. There's a little strip of property that I'll show you again, that's an Impact Zone 4, that's limited and not allowed to have residential units. The developer has laid it out as a parking area, overflow parking area for the community. It is within noise contours of the city. At this time, the noise contours of 60 and 55 both allow for residential uses. The AVO, should it ever make it forward and be approved, would have some additional restrictions that would apply. Another noise contour, this is a future. Just a quick point out, it is a permitted use listed within the Deepwell Master Plan designation of land use group V for Village, which is a higher-density residential type use. Unit mix is shown on the right, it's a little blurry, I apologize, that's just how it came out of the program. Again, it's 223 units on 28 and 1/2 acres, so about 7 and 1/2 units per acre. This is a visual diagram showing that location of Impact Zone 4 boundary. You can see the area to the upper left is the area within Zone 4. It's parking and open space. There's some addition of drainage in one part of the area. So they've managed to keep all of the residential units out of that area and in the area that's permitted by our codes for residential. I'll let this run partway through. This was a short video provided by the developer, just to give a feel for what the community might look like. We'll note specifically, all of those trees are less than the heights of the buildings, and will be maintained that way, and you'll see a note in a moment or two that address that. And rather than go to the inside, we'll talk about the conversation that occurred at Planning Commission with the airport director and the developer, and the commission agreeing to four stipulations, effectively adding to the approval process. The commission recommended in favor unanimously, subject to these four criteria being included. The developer is here and can answer additional questions, should you have them. But based on inclusion of those, the recommendation was unanimous to approve, and the motion that we've prepared for you, based on the Planning Commission recommendation, is before you, and I'm happy to answer questions. Again, the developer is here also.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a 10-part question, George. No, I'm kidding. Actually, I kind of did want to hear from the developer, because I think this is a bit of an interesting approach to trying to solve high density. And I think the video kind of showed it a little, come on up. The video kind of showed it a little bit. I like the idea of those courtyards, and I think I heard you talk about this, maybe not at the most recent Planning and Zoning Commission, but maybe the first one before. And I think it might be worth kind of talking about that, and, you know, what you think of this as kind of the vision that you guys are trying to achieve with this development.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Dave, thank you for hanging in there. I know it's been a long evening.
I apologize, I'm, I'll try to speak quickly and succinctly. Thank you, members of the city council and staff.
Take your time, this is a substantial development, so we appreciate you being here.
So, before I answer that question, I wanted to first mention, top of, top of mind, because it seems like it's the largest concern, which is the airport proximity. So what we've done from day one is worked directly with Dr. Sabata to make sure that this complies. We had 36 points on the site submitted to FAA, they were all approved. We also agreed that before we ever start construction, if it's approved as a project, that we would do the temporary 7460. So we alert the airport and get permission before we can use cranes to lift the trusses or to have our concrete pumps out there. These things that I'm gonna mention to you, we're agreeing to tonight, some of them are addition to the four, and we just want to be an example for you, for future developers, so you can say, hey, they did it right. And I'll just list them quickly. And if we don't honor these, we're inviting you to freeze permits, please, because we're gonna put our money where our mouth is. And then once the project's completed, it's a rental community, we're inviting the city to come in and audit our files whenever they want, while we're open. And if you find a customer that's not signed the Navigation Easement properly, then we welcome fines per, per discovery. We want to be completely transparent, and we're happy to have a big punishment if we're not honoring what I'm telling you tonight. So number one, we're agreeing to have the placard on the wall when they come in. Two, we'll have a monument when people pull in, it'll show the distance to the airport. Three, we're gonna include in the lease agreement, the airport influence map. Four, obviously, we're including the Navigation Easement. Five, we're inviting community development inspections on our files. Six, in addition to what was asked of us, we're adding more additional sound mitigation systems. So we're installing a Milgard homemaker window with a sound transmission class of 28 to 34 on the majority of the windows, when a normal window is 22 to 26. So we're stepping up the windows. We're also doing Wepplin cellulose on the insulation, so that we honor that concern. Number nine, we've agreed to the height.
Dave, are you talking about insulation in the attics, or in the...
In the walls, in the attic.
Yeah, in the attics.
Yes. The height, 30 feet 5 1/8 inch is, that's just the top of the barn. The majority of the homes will be 18 feet or 25 feet, and we've agreed that the trees will always be maintained in perpetuity, so they can never go above 30 feet 5 1/8 inch. We've honored the Zone 4. The only thing that's in that Zone 4, like you mentioned, is parking and some garages, because some people are gonna want garages, and those would be limited to a 14-foot 2-inch height. The whole community's low water. That turf that you saw is artificial. Those trees that you saw were animation, and I wish we would have not allowed them to make them so big, but they're, they're all gonna be low-water-use plants. And then, Mayor Protam, to your question, so I'm circling back, but all those things I just mentioned, we're happy to put into an agreement, and to have penalties if they're ever not honored in perpetuity. On the design, we felt there was a need in Prescott to have rental homes that were not the traditional rectangular three-story tan box, which is called a garden apartment, which is kind of an oxymoron. And those apartments generally have steps, and you gotta walk up the steps to get to the third floor. They're, they're huge, and they're also bad for view visibility. This community was designed with architecture and theming in mind, so it's craftsman, it's farmhouse, we're honoring the original, not original, but high design, and it's multi-sided architecture, so you don't just see beauty in the front, you'll see it wherever it's highly visible. We didn't want to have people driving in and seeing the typical covered metal parking that you generally see in all apartment communities, so we hid the parking in different areas, so as you drive through it, it looks like, you know, a traditional old town that you'd see on Mayberry somewhere. It has the Great Street, so when you drive in, it'll look like the Great Street we created at one that we just built in Prescott Valley. And our goal, we would love to win best architecture in the country on this, just like we did at Astoria, which you also honored us with your approval years ago. That was a highly visible corner on 89 and Prescott, Prescott Lakes Boulevard, and we redesigned the whole thing to go with a great theme to honor the city, and we're doing the same thing here. I'm here to answer, you know, any and all questions or concerns.
Dave, thank you for that. I guess, I guess one of the things, and I, first off, I want to compliment you, the due diligence your team has done around the concerns around the airport is top-notch, and I really appreciate you going the extra mile to deal with those concerns. I guess one of the things that I heard you talk about initially in Planning and Zoning is that you really do intend for this to be a community that competes for rental business in Prescott, and the idea of the, kind of, the houses are facing out into a shared courtyard is designed to be, build community within that. And I was wondering if you can just briefly touch on that.
So this is all about connectivity, and we want to celebrate neighbors, getting to know each other, and socialization. The best example I can use is what we're doing at Mulberry Farms in Prescott Valley, where we brought in a special team to run the socialization. So the events and activities are way over the top on what it's like to live in a rental community. The courtyards were designed for that reason, so you can sit on your front porch, you can get to know your neighbor. get to know your neighbor. Regardless of the demographic, if it's a young family and they have little kids, they could be playing on that artificial turf. If it's a retired couple, they could be sitting there. It's open to all, is our intention. I think I lost train of thought on if I am answering your full question.
That's great. That's great. You did answer my question. Thank you.
Oh, no, you know what? The one thing I didn't answer, we want to compete directly with apartments. And so, and I'm, I know a lot of the apartment developers in town, I know what their costs are per door. And we're excited that we think we're going to beat their costs in many cases. And by beating costs, that means our rents can be very competitive against a three-story garden apartment.
Councilmember Roussing.
Thank you. I know it's been a long day, and you're still very enthusiastic. I wanted to ask you, and maybe George can answer, about sub-metering to encourage water conservation, have each unit individually metered, so that they will be getting a water bill, or how is that going to be handled?
Great question, and I don't know if I have a super-strong answer for you yet, but I can, I can find one and have it to the, to the City Council tomorrow. Generally, we'll, we'll meter, I think, the buildings, so if it's a sixplex, it'll be a meter to the sixplex. If there's technology that allows us to determine how much water's going to each unit, we can do that. But if we put individual meters on each unit, it's going to drive the cost up considerably, is my understanding, and I'm trying to...
You're talking about sub-meters, not regular water meters.
If there's an affordable solution to do that, that would benefit us as well, because we also want to be able to see it, because if it's being abused, we can address it with the customer.
Or if there's a leak.
The good news is, there's not a lot they're going to be able to landscape, because the backyards are brick pavers and artificial turf. And then the fronts, there's that artificial court, turf courtyard. So there's not a lot they can really water, and that's where most of the abuse happens, is on landscaping. And then all the fixtures are low-water-use fixtures in the house. But I'm open to, if there is a solution that we can deploy that's affordable, I'm all for it.
Also, I just want to note that you have just one city-dedicated street in and out for over 250 people.
Yes, we did a loop system. So as you, as you drive in on the Great Street up at Jenna Lane, you'll drive through the community, and there's an emergency access that is shown with a hatched mark below that white box. The white box is on the right side of the screen in the middle. That's the existing Deepwell Ranch Monument. And so, right below that is a gray line. That's the secondary access to leave the community if there's ever an emergency or a fire. And the Transportation Department did not want that to be full-blown dumping cars onto Willow Creek, because it's a busy street. So it's going to be a breakaway gate for emergency vehicles only.
Okay. And then, you know, I hate to be cynical, but many times we have people up here before us who make all, give us a big sales pitch, make all kinds of promises, and then we okay it, and then retroactively try to get it in writing, and it never happens. So we've been using the word "agree" a lot, and, but "agree" isn't the same as getting it actually in writing. And I want to ask Legal, do we have anything in writing concerning the stipulations that Planning and Zoning requested?
There is a term sheet in writing that was worked out, and we knew how that... In terms of the conditions, those four...
Sorry. Thank you. In terms of the four conditions that are brought to you today, that, as far as I know, is not part of any writing, but would be part of the approval. So that would, we would have that as part of the approval and wouldn't need it in writing. It would, in fact, carry somewhat more weight. It'd be your determination here today. But I don't know if you, but the initial part, the initial, the conditions that he mentioned he had agreed to, that is in writing.
Okay. So these stipulations that Planning and Zoning requested, we have to include those in the motion? Or Mr. Worley, do you have a comment?
The only comment was, I think the City Attorney covered it, is if you follow the motion language, you're including those four conditions as part of your recommendation or your motion to approve.
Okay. And also, I have one question for Mr. Grounds. Previously, you'd said something about if a tenant is unhappy with the overflights, he'll be able to collect his deposit and be released from his lease?
No, that was what Dr. Sabata asked us if we would do. It was a fifth question from her, that after our research with all the construction lenders, they're not going to let us put a clause in a lease that says, "Come on in, lease, lease this unit, and then if you decide you don't want to live here, you can just leave." Because the cost for us to change over a customer is very expensive. So that's the only one that we didn't agree to, because for us, it's not practical to close a $56 million construction loan with that clause in there. The banks want to see a healthy, thriving community for them to lend on. That one would make them nervous if people could leave for no reason. But that is the reason why we're agreeing to all these other things, even the ones that we're volunteering to do, to make sure everybody knows. There's an airport right there, and there's 877 flights that happen every day, and that'll change as it grows. We'll update the number. It's full disclosure. And I'm happy to work with...
You may be renting to a lot of Amory Riddle students who will not be bothered by the overflights.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, I built a lot of the houses that were in Deepwell before we sold years ago, and the community that I was most responsible for was Saddlewood. And those folks, for the most part, by far, love their homes, and they're much closer to the airport than this community is. So we're very optimistic and hopeful that they'll, they'll love this, and that's why we're willing to invest so much into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned parking structures. Are you going to have parking, covered parking?
No, we're going to have garages. And we don't know how many garages we're going to have yet, but it'll probably be somewhere between 60 and 150 garages. We're going to have 494 overall parking spaces, including garages, for 223 units. So we're going above and beyond the parking requirement.
Yeah, my question really wasn't about parking. It was more about if you had a covered parking, would you be using solar in this project? Because I would be a strong proponent for using solar as part of this project.
Yes. If we do some covered, we would want it hidden, because we're still going to back to our discipline of trying to make it look like the antithesis of an apartment project. So solar panels on parking garages are not that expensive, you know, if we, if we... So I'm open to the idea. I don't know if I'd ask to have that as a requirement at this meeting, but it'd give me a chance to do some research. We are going to have a, quite a few charging stations for electric vehicles. At our last rental community, every, every resident has an electric vehicle charge. We don't know what we're going to do here yet, because we haven't, until we pass this level, we haven't finished all the plans and costs and all those things.
I would appreciate you considering it. I think that's environmentally a good idea for the future.
I agree.
So I'm assuming those are Level 1 charger ports in the parking garage of the unit? Are you going to have some outside that could be Level 2?
There's going to need to be, like, in a garage, any garage that we have would automatically have an electric charging 220 in the garage, so that's a given. The question we haven't decided yet is how many are on the outside, where people can just pull up anywhere and they can find their charging stations. But you see more and more and more EVs, so if we don't have enough EV charging stations, we're going to lose in the marketplace. So it's a, it's a good motivator. And our actions hopefully speak louder than words, that you see what we did at the last one, with, with everyone got one.
And what about the long-term management of this rental facility? Is that going to be you, or are you going to contract that out?
We'll contract it out. Currently, we use a company called Cohere, which is the, the owners of Cohere did all of the DMB projects for decades. DMB has an incredible reputation for socialization. That's why we sought them out, because we want to, we want to have that same level like Verado and DC Ranch. So we brought them in, and currently, we think we're going to use them, but that's not fully decided yet. But they're doing a great job, and I don't see why we wouldn't use them. So they would be our third-party property manager.
Well, we're making the decision on approving this based upon all of the components of your proposal. And having a rental location allows you to control a lot of the things that we are very concerned about in a residential community. So your ability to control landscaping and control water use and control the heights of, of trees and other things that we have to consider in the long run. And knowing that you're going to have all these disclosure transparency issues when somebody comes in to first look at it and decide they want to, want to lease a location from you, then we've got to make sure that these continue on over the long run. I know sub-metering can be somewhat expensive, but it should be in your best interest to control the water use within those rental units, because you're the one paying the bill.
Yes.
And you would then, how do you, how do you go about including that in the rental fee?
So we do an average, kind of a guesstimate of what the water use will be, and then that's a line item in their lease. So we are hyper-focused on what, what the water is. So if we have a sixplex, and it's, this sixplex is a lot higher than this one over here, we know there's a problem. So we'd have to dig in to figure out why, because it is, it's going right to, to our pocketbook if it's being abused. And then on electricity, the people would pay their own electric bill. But there's generally, on sewer and water, that's a community fee that is added to their, their lease.
Tree, I can't say, long-term sub-meter. Well, those are all the questions that I have. I know I've kind of toured your Mulberry Farms facility, and, boy, this looks very similar. And I know a lot of the components of your presentation you included there. So that's, that's something that we all can look, look on to know that Mr. Grounds and the Great Streets program isn't just a nice proposal on paper. It currently exists down in Prescott Valley, and apparently, it's very, very popular.
Yeah, we're excited about it. Thank you.
Any other concerns? I know at the bottom of the fifth inning, Arizona now is ahead 3 to 2.
Wow.
I've only given you updates at the conclusion of an inning, okay? I mean, it's exciting to talk about the middle, but, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to run a City Council meeting here, okay?
Mayor, can I, Mayor, may I make just a quick comment?
Go ahead.
I wanted to thank you also, I was in Planning and Zoning when you were there, for how amenable you've been. And instead of resisting every suggestion, I'm glad you had an open mind to understand the whys and the hows of being asked to do some of those things. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Site 22-004.
Second.
Motion is second.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grounds. Good luck, and welcome to North Prescott.
Very grateful. Thank you.
I know. Impressed. Would you like me to introduce the next item, Mayor? Okay. Yep, no problem. Sure. The next item is the approval of multiple contracts related to the fiscal year 2024 pavement preservation projects, pavement preservation program projects. And I'm going to let, Tim's here, so I'm going to let him talk about it. And what I love about Tim is he likes to just move through these things very quickly, don't you, Tim?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, joining me today is Greg Patrick. And while Council may not be familiar with Greg, Greg has been with the city for nearly 20 years in our Street Maintenance Department, and recently, he's been serving as our infrastructure analyst to keep our, to help us advance our pavement management program. Greg has great expertise in pavement performance and life cycles, and his extensive knowledge of the city's pavement network has been a huge asset for public work. So when I'm done, Greg and I can help take questions. While I'm up here asking for you to approve a contract, Greg did the yeoman's work on procuring these two contracts for this particular item. So the project is primarily along Willow Creek Road from Green Lane down to Iron Springs Road, where the hospital's at. As many of you know, and if you drive it, it's pretty much the worst part of, the worst section of Willow Creek Road that's kind of remaining. The other sections north of here have had various pavement rehabilitations or treatments over the last few years. So the project will include a profile mill and double microseal type 3 installation along that yellow line from Green Lane down to the hospital. The current PCI for this section of the road is about a 55. And then we'll apply a double microseal 3 application on this road. And then the other ancillary roads next to it, stuff like that, we're going to be in this area. These will also get microseal treatments. They will not get the micro mill like Willow Creek Road will. This is a project we just recently completed on Prescott Lakes Parkway, not that long ago, from 89 over to Willow Lake Road, so we'll have a similar look and feel to it when it's done. We are also doing pavement repairs on southbound Willow Creek Road at Rossar, between Delano and Rossar, about 360 lineal feet. Both those lanes are pretty trashed. We had a series of water leaks in the intersection over the number of years. A lot of pavement repairs have been done that. So we're going, the two southbound lanes are going to be completely milled and three inches of new asphalt put in before we do the microseal. The PCI in that area right there is averaging about a 35. We would expect the road to come up to between an 80 and 85 when we're done with the whole corridor. Advantages of this type of treatment are, is very cost-effective, and it'll increase our PCI. Microseal consists of applying a mixture of emulsified oil and aggregates to the existing roadway surface. Treatment helps to preserve the underlying pavement. The underlying pavement in this area is in pretty good shape. I know it may not look like it, but a lot of what you're seeing coming off there is old ACFC. The project will support city's strategic goals, the City Council's strategic goals for highly-rated services and well-maintained streets. City is permitted by code to purchase services under another publicly bid contract. This project will use the most, will use cost-competitive procurement process completed by the city of Glendale. Southwest Slurry Seal entered into a one-year contract with Glendale in December of last year, and that contract expires December 13th of this year. Public Works staff also selected to use the city's job order contracting, or the Jock method for, delivery method with Jay Bannicky Construction for the payment removals. Public Works is recommending award of contracts to Southwest Slurry Seal in the amount of $1,178,355, and a job order contracting, contract to Jay Bannicky Construction for Funding for the project is budgeted in FY '24 and available in the Streets Fund.
Thank you, Tim. The mayor stepped out. I'm going to, who has questions over there? I'll go with Eric first, because he's closer. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I have several questions. I know Rue Street and, I believe, Willow Creek down near the hospital has several springs underneath the roadway surfaces that continue, continue to affect the quality of the road. Is that being addressed? I mean, how do you deal with springs? Sump pumps, whatever? That's one question. The other question is the duration of the project and how will it impact businesses on Willow Creek Road?
Says the interested business owner. Greg, you want to take a lead? You want me to?
So, Mayor, Council, so the, as far as the springs go and stuff, this is just a surface treatment, so we're not going into any kind of base or any, dealing with any kind of groundwater at this point. This is intended to, you know, last for about seven years. As far as the impact to businesses and stuff, we're going to do community outreach, talk to the businesses and stuff. We're going to try and keep the work zones rather small, about a half, half a mile at a time or so, and then do that work in that area, complete that, and then move down to the next section, to try and keep the impact as small as possible, the impact area.
Councilman Moore, I would note, as a business owner who has a property on Willow Creek Road where the road is currently torn up on polium, and I think, is it polium, right?
Polium, yes, sir.
Polium. They have been, the outreach and communication that they have done has been amazing, and I... And I've been meaning to tell you that, Tim. You guys have been top notch. Anytime the road, the street was closed today and I got notified a week in advance. So I think you'll be okay.
They are going to be using the same, same PR company.
Yeah, and they're amazing, by the way. They do good work. Councilman, Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you for getting this project underway. Willow Creek is, is a critical artery here through our community. It's an economic generator. We have a lot of businesses that front it. And it's just a coincidence that we have two council members whose businesses will definitely be appreciated by this.
So what's the score?
In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2024-085.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. See how much confidence I have in you, Tim.
Pass the seven zero.
And I move to approve city contract number 2023-211A1.
Second.
Please vote.
Pass the seven zero.
Take us to the next and final agenda item, which is the approval of the purchase of the Arizona state land Glassford Hill open space in the amount of $6,553,767. I do have Joe Baines here, our Parks and Recreation Director. This has been a long, long awaited and great project that talks about the partnership, the regional partnerships between the city of Prescott, Prescott Valley and the county. And I'm super excited for, for this coming up. So, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Katie. And thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this took about 30 years to put it together, and I'm going to do this presentation in about 10 minutes. So just a little bit of background, really this process started in 1998 when the city of Prescott and Prescott Valley petitioned the Arizona, or petitioned the Arizona State Land Department through the Arizona Preserve Initiative to set aside 1,893 acres of this as suitable for conservation, which really, at the end of the day, was very important because that, the appraised value then became quite a bit less 20, 25 years later. In 2000, the Prescott voters passed a 1% streets and open space tax that a lot of this money was spent on for acquiring open space that's contiguous to Glassford Hill. So really what we're talking about here is Glassford Hill, but we're also talking about all of the properties around it that have been acquired that make the regional park. In 2021, one of those pieces that we put together, I think with this council, was the annexation with Arizona Eco Development, which added 474 acres of this regional park into the city of Prescott. And in 2019 and, or 2019 and 2021, we were successful in acquiring 460 acres of North Storm Ranch. It's also in the heart of the Granite Dells and contiguous again to Glassford Hill as well as the AED property and Watson Lake. Then in 2022, May 26, we went into an intergovernmental agreement with our partners in Prescott Valley and the county for the purpose of trying to purchase this state land property of Glassford Hill. And then with the help of Selena Bliss, who sponsored the bill, and Kwan and Senator Bennett that helped us pass House Bill 2518, each Prescott Valley and Prescott received $1.75 million from the state to help with this purchase. So a lot of things that had to happen in the background to make this thing where it is today. So there's a lot of numbers on this page, and really I think what's important here is this breaks out the parcels. And by the way, I have Brian Sparks, our real estate administrator, who's been a huge help on this whole thing here, if there's any questions you might have for him. But really, this is just breaking it down by parcel number and the price per parcel. But the important stuff here is how we worked it down through the partnership. We worked it down through the partnership with the county agreeing to pay 35% of the city's purchase, as well as the town of Prescott Valley's purchase. The state appropriation that I just spoke to you about that worked it down. And the real number here that's important for this discussion is the taxpayers of the city of Prescott, the cost for this 953 acres of property, or 963, excuse me, is under $700,000. So I think our partners helped us get this down to, I think, a palatable level for a purchase for something as significant as what we're looking at here. And I will show you a little video. Again, this is a regional park. This includes Watson Woods. So that is basically about 4,000 acres altogether when you consider, and I call this the puzzle right here. These are the pieces of the puzzle that have been put together over the years. 1998, the purchase of Watson Lake, Watson Woods preceded that. All of these pieces fit the puzzle that gives us a contiguous about, it's well over 4,000 acres of contiguous property with our neighbors in Prescott Valley and our partners in the county that becomes a regional, a regional draw. And it will draw people from across the country for sure. So this is kind of the doorstep of what we're at right now. The green is the proposed purchase that's in front of you today. A couple of kind of moving forward things here. Per the intergovernmental agreement, Prescott and Prescott Valley and the county will continue to meet at least annually to strategize the future Glassford Hill property purchases. In the IGA, we identified about 3,500 acres in total. This purchase is around 2,400 acres, so there's still, or 2,300 acres, there's still some acreage in there that's left to be contemplated. This, of course, is the most prominent parts of Glassford Hill, and I think probably deserves more of the attention. Also, the Arizona State Land Department will be holding an auction for this property. They have to auction it off just for the public. I know Council knows this, but the state trust land is mainly there to benefit financially schools, K through 12 education. So they do have to offer their property to the highest bidder that funds that education in the state. So there will be an auction on November 21st at 10:00 AM on the courthouse steps. After that, we'll have a celebration with more details to come. And I thought it was really important to point out, I think it's epic, this partnership that we've had, not only with the county and Prescott Valley, but the state, to all pull the rope in the same direction is pretty amazing. We did this process in 18 months. Again, I've got to hand it off to Brian Sparks helping us on the city end with the State Land Department, which can be very cumbersome to work with, but Brian helped us kind of weave our way through that process and got us to the courthouse steps on November 21st. This purchase is budgeted in this fiscal year budget in the general fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Brian is also here if you have any questions specifically about the process.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. This is really an exciting day. It's been a long time coming, and I just want to thank everyone involved for bringing this to, this is a legacy project, and it's been a dream for many people. I just want to clarify, the public notice in the October 20, Courier has a very small map. And I was looking at it, and there seemed to be a discrepancy between the map that we got in our packet, but I see the map that you have in your presentation corresponds with the map that's in the state land public notice. So that's been taken care of. And I also want to remind people that this is just phase one, that we've got a phase two in the works, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a couple of things I want to say. First off, I want to, I want to say thank you to Joe. I know that that puzzle piece picture you showed us, that you've been a real integral part of making that happen. And so I want to give you some kudos on that. I also know that that work doesn't happen without a lot of other hands within the city staff working to do that too. So I just want to thank directly all the city staff that was part of this acquisition. It's been a long time coming, and it is a very exciting moment. And I also just want to echo what Joe has said, which is, this is, this is really a pretty big achievement for our region, not least of which because it was, it took a lot of regional cooperation. And, and that goes from Prescott, Prescott Valley, out by county, you know, even our local representatives were involved in kind of making sure we got state allocation from this. It's a real, this is what, in my mind, good government looks like when it's, when it's doing good work. So I just want to thank all the folks that had, whose hands touched this project along the way.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you. I'd just echo as well what we're talking about, super exciting to put this, this piece together. Can you reiterate for us one more time how many acres we're looking at acquiring with this potentially on November 21st? And then the total cost to the city is less than $685,000.
That's correct. So 953 acres in this purchase, and it's $684,000 and some odd change.
It's a total of 2,300 acres.
The total of the, the city of Prescott is 953 acres for $684,000, and Prescott Valley's is 1,253 acres?
1,300 and change.
Yeah, 1,300 and change for a little over a million, 1.3 million, I believe it is.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much for, both of you, for everything that you've done. And again, Kathy and Brandon have mentioned, a lot of people have been putting effort into this, but I know that you've been running point on this for us, and I'm excited to see what Chris Hoskins is going to do with this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, yeah. Is Mr. Sparks here?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. Okay, I haven't met you yet, and I was wondering who you were. And I just wanted to thank you for all your expertise and work in bringing this to fruition.
My name is Brian Sparks. I'm the new city of Prescott Real Estate Administrator. And ironically, I came from the State Land Department, so, and I was the chief administrator for the State Land Department on this Glassford Hill file. So I wonder how I got to know everybody, and they stole me from the state. But I'm glad to be here, glad I got to work on this. But all the credit goes to Joe. He's been working on this for a long time. And this, like you said, this is a legacy project, and it's going to be fantastic for the community, so.
Oh, well, welcome to Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you. I did some quick math. I may have done it wrong, but the total access of acres that we're getting here and what we're paying is about $300 an acre to this, to cost to this people of the city of Prescott. That's fantastic. You can't buy land in, like, Polton or someplace that nobody wants to be for that.
Careful about listening about Polton.
Well, I know when, I was involved in almost all of the meetings that went on here. And I know having a combination of the State Land Department, the State Department of Parks and Recreation, both of, all of the communities, the county involved, I'll echo what Mayor Protam said, that, you know, this is an example of how multiple jurisdictions can work together for the betterment of the community. So I think it, the fact that we got this thing done in 18 months is pretty darn remarkable in and of itself. So I want to thank you, Joe, and, and everybody that was involved here to get to this point. And even though I think a lot of people in the community will see this 6.55 million-dollar number first, emphasizing the fact that the net cost to us is less than 685,000. And we even had some controversial issues when the appraisal first came up, when the appraiser hadn't even visited the area. So when he walked up on top of this dormant volcano and then realized that the slope there was really not very developable, it caused the appraised value to approach a more reasonable number. And that's why we're here today. So thank you all for doing this, and I think the community at large, and having a regional park now that can be made available for not only our residents, but people in the broader community. And as we continue to be known as a, as an ecotourism location, this just adds to the interest here. Originally, it was going to be called the Glassford Hill Regional Park, but I figured we needed to kind of change that name for marketing purposes. So a lot of people realize the unique aspects of the Granite Dells. And I think a lot of people want to come here to see the Granite Dells, not necessarily a dormant volcano. So that's why we decided to change the name to the Glassford Dells Regional Park, so we can probably market it a little more effectively in the future. So thank you for that. And do we have any public comment?
We do. Tom Rusing.
Good evening, everybody. The comments I'm going to make tonight are really those of Joanne Oler's, Chairman of Save the Dells, but because of the late hour, she had to leave. And it's really a pleasure to be here. This is really the culmination of, as Joe said, probably 30 years of efforts by many people, including early on Elizabeth Ruffner and the Open Space Alliance. And it is a story of building of relationships, of negotiations, and of persistence on the part of many people to make this happen. It also highlights the importance of Glassford Hill to the creation of what we still will say is Granite Dells Regional Park and Preserve. And when Save the Dells first started, the two main goals of Save the Dells was to preserve the area, the 500 acres in the AED annexation in perpetuity as open space. And that was accomplished in the last couple of years. The other goal was creation of the regional park and preserve. And so this is an amazing step towards that goal. Save the Dells also, one of our extended missions is to foster collaboration, and this is a great example of collaboration between the elected leaders. a great example of collaboration between the elected leaders of the Prescott, Prescott Valley and the county. And we applaud that. We also want to say that we appreciate Joe Baines's leadership in this project, not only of Glassford Hill, but as was stated, in acquiring some of the other property as well. The other thing we really appreciate is he and Chris Hoskins' philosophy of a light touch on the land. And so we really hope that that is carried on as this regional park is formed. And so I guess I'll close by just saying that this is another big step, but we anxiously await the auction coming November 21st, and hopefully we'll have a lot to celebrate afterwards. Anyway, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of Glassford Hill.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting today. Where are we with the Diamondbacks? I think we're ahead four to two after the seventh inning.
Walk two batters down.
Come on, positive, okay? I'm going to close this city council session with a quote from our great President Ronald Reagan. Live each day to the fullest. Live each day with enthusiasm, optimism, and hope. If you do, I'm convinced that your contribution to this wonderful experiment we call America will be profound. This meeting is adjourned.